Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here.
Mr. Denial?
Here.
Mr. Severson?
Here.
Mr. Gray.
President. We will now listen to, I suspect, Mr. Thompson. As I will.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Paul Thompson with Planning Services. A couple items here. Just on past board meeting on July 23rd, they were up in Tahoe, I think I reported on this last time. They heard a update on the Tahoe Basin Community Plan, as well as they were supposed to hear the force flyer appeal, but that got continued to an open date. On August 20th, actually just last Tuesday, the Board did approve a code enforcement hearing officer, and so, you know, we'll be, she's going to be on board and hearing administrative citations, of which we haven't issued any yet. But anyway, that's something that the Board approved recently. Upcoming Planning Commission hearings, so on September 12th, right now, we don't have any items scheduled, so that one may be likely canceled, so just be aware of that. And then on September 26th, we only have two subdivision modification requests on that agenda, and that's, those requests are in Tahoe, so that's the only thing on the agenda at this point. And still not sure as to whether or not it would be a Tahoe meeting or not at this point.
That's the 26th you're talking about?
September 26th.
Yeah. But none on the 12th, huh?
No, no items on the 12th.
Oh, goodie, I'm going to be in recognition.
So with that, any questions?
Is the flyer, what, you said it's been continued for?
To an open date. That was at the request of the applicant, and we're not sure if, you know, when, if, if it's going to come back.
Well, I talked to them the last couple days, and they said they had abandoned the idea of starting this year.
Oh.
And they will be now moving until next year, but I guess they're still trying to sort it out.
Probably working with the appellants, trying to.
I don't know whether everybody remembers that or not, but that was, there was an adjacent subdivision claiming the water from this was going to affect them. Then there was a study down by the county, as I recall, that said that's not the case. And I don't understand how they justify doing what they're doing. I guess they're just looking for a beat pocket, huh?
Who knows?
It's kind of too bad.
Any other?
Thank you.
All righty.
Okay, Paul?
Thanks. Now, so notice to the general public, if anyone here has anything they'd like to talk about to the Board, that has nothing to do with anything on the agenda, now would be the time to come forward, and seeing none, we'll proceed on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, this is concerning subdivision map modification and variance from Bear Creek Association, and I believe we have a stand-in stellar performance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to you, Commissioners. I'm Alex Fish with Planning Services Division, and I'm presenting on behalf of Stacy Wydra this morning in our Tahoe office. The request before you is an amendment to the Bear Creek Association subdivision final map. Give you just a moment. Do you need to take that?
No.
I want to put it on speakerphone.
Sounds like a real phone.
It's an amendment to the final map to reduce the 30-foot mapped front setback. This is a setback that actually shows up on the final map in favor of approval of a 16-foot setback to permit construction of a garage entry feature, a garage and entry feature, I should say, addition accessory to the single-family residence. And you can see that right here. There is a small encroachment into the setback shown in this dark triangle. This is the existing residence. There is also a companion request for approval of a variance to the 100-foot water course setback along Bear Creek to approve a 29-foot reduction to that setback, so in other words, a 71-foot setback to the center line of the creek in order to permit construction of a new deck, an addition to a deck, and mostly a new deck out in this portion of the property. Notably, the ordinance that defines the requirement for the 100-foot setback was added to the county code subsequent to the approval of this map by some 30 years approximately, and that's part of the reason for that request. So that said, this is just a little better color glossy photograph, if you will, of the, of the proposed site plan showing the existing residence. Bear Creek Drive is the project frontage out here. The existing residence is located here. Right now, and we'll see this in some photographs that I have of the site as we advance through the slideshow, is an existing parking pad area. The effect of construction of this new garage would effectively push the parking area by virtue of the garage location back into the site a little bit further. Notably on this map, there's a piece of correspondence that you all received yesterday, or maybe a few days ago, from the Alpine Springs Community Water District, noting the existence of a sewer line at the rear of the property that is not located within an easement at present. And the Alpine Springs Water District has requested that the county staff place a condition, or that your commission place a condition, requiring the applicant to dedicate an easement and, and requiring the district to approve the final design of the deck. The district is agreeable to allowing an encroachment into the easement under certain specified conditions, essentially that there would be a hold harmless agreement between the, the property owner and the district. And the applicant's representative, Rob Olson, who is here today, informed me this morning that they, that he met with the applicant last night, and they're, they're agreeable to that condition. I'm going to advance a little further here and show that the applicant and the architect are considering also some alternatives that would be more conforming to our standards, that may meet the objectives of all parties in potentially locating the deck feature outside of the easement altogether. But nonetheless, the message is that the district is, is probably agreeable to this scenario here as proposed in your packet, with the understanding that a hold harmless agreement would be required. So that said, we do have some examples here showing what the, what the building would look like as, as modified. So this would be the new garage structure, which I believe is located to the southwest of the existing residence. This is the, a 3D image of the deck as revised in that, that previous slide. Show you some photographs. This is looking kind of southeast from Bear Creek Drive into the site, and obviously, this is the existing parking pad area, and this is really immediately adjacent to the roadway. Another view of that same location as you're driving along Bear Creek. Some basic elevations of the proposal. Obviously, this is a view. This is the north elevation, so you're out in the roadway at this point, looking kind of at a, maybe a 45-degree angle at the residence. This easterly elevation below here, another view towards the rear of the property. This is, what we see here in this slide is the approximate location, I believe, and Rob can confirm this for me.
Of the garage?
Thank you. Again, pushed further back into the site from where the existing parking area is now. Couple more views of the site. I believe these are the south and west elevations. So out here, this is the deck as proposed in your packet along the creek. And of course, this is a view as you're driving again along Bear Creek Drive in the opposite Staff, in their analysis of the request, determined that the variance request was consistent with the findings for variance approval, and that it is the minimum departure from the ordinance necessary to grant relief. A lot of that analysis is based on the existing conditions of, of the subdivision map, where the building envelopes are located in close proximity to the creek. There are many other residences in the immediate vicinity that are in a very similar condition, where they have existing encroachments into the creek. Their opportunity to add to their home is similarly constrained, and they would likely need variance approval. Similarly, staff's review of the proposed subdivision modification for the front setback modification found that the request was reasonable, and that it would result in adequate safety, would be consistent with the character of the neighborhood, and similar findings that were in support of that, shown in your packet. With that, staff is recommending your approval as proposed, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them. And also, we have, as I mentioned, Rob Olson of Olson Olson Architects.
Say, Alex, just a question that I kind of missed a little bit. Did you say that the encroachment into the 100-foot zone of the creek is pretty common occurrence in this area?
It, under existing conditions, yes. The subdivision, I believe, for the final map was recorded in 1962. At that time, we did not have any setback requirements from waterways. That requirement was added in the 90s, I believe, during the county general plan update. And, and subsequent to that, we have an existing condition, not only in this subdivision, but in many areas of the county, where you have residences that are now non-conforming to the current standards, and they may be encroaching into that setback as constructed, legally established, just a different standard now.
So this would be the first one with variance?
This would be the first in this subdivision? I, I don't know. I'm going to say probably not. I know that Alpine Meadows in general, as a community, has, has a history of having similar circumstances throughout it, and this is a pretty common request that's brought forward either to, to your commissioner or to the zoning administrator.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question, too. Isn't there a county ordinance that says if you have more than six feet of rise or fall in the first 10 feet of your lot, that you qualify for automatic variance?
You are, you are correct, Commissioner Severson. And that is in the report. The distinction in this case is that when you have a recorded boundary on a map, it supersedes. There's a hierarchy of the application of setbacks. When you have a mapped setback, that takes precedence over the ordinance.
I see, okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment, or a question. The sewer easement, is it in one of the conditions of approval?
It is. I'll have to-
Was it included in there?
-fumble through here, but as I looked at it yesterday, I believe it's condition eight. The applicant shall comply with any conditions imposed by the Alpine Springs County Water District as one of them. There should be another.
Okay.
I'm looking.
The only reason I asked you that, since we got this letter late, I was wondering if it was in the original report someplace.
And I, I believe that the condition, that rather generic condition is, is intended to, to provide kind of a blanket authorization to the, the negotiation of the easement rights and any restrictions that would be attendant to it.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Fish. If the applicant would like to step forward and have any comments and any questions from the Board?
My name is Rob Olson. I, I think that the presentation was pretty accurate to what we're requesting, and I thank you for your time and consideration. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Yeah, I do have a question with regards to, the map shows some grading underneath the patio. Could you describe the extent of the grading, or what's-
Our, our goal is to do minimal grading into the creek setback, and we're looking to lift it up on piers, the patio versus dig down and put, I, I think we're actually allowed to actually dig down and put a structure into the creek setback, but if it's more than 12 inches off the grade, we have to ask for the variance. So instead of actually digging it up, which is actually illegal, we're doing a lighter impact by actually floating the deck up off the natural terrain. That way, if for ever, any reason, the Bear Creek actually does flood and actually get 200 feet wide, you know, it will float underneath us, but we feel pretty confident that, that creek won't ever need 200 feet.
And so, where you show a grading line, I guess you're not anticipating that to be much of a grading option?
There, there's just a little bit at the, at the top of the, you know, where the highest part hits, and it's probably about 12 inches. So there'd be just a small little retaining wall at the beginning, but then the rest of it just floats underneath the natural grade.
Okay. And then there was reference to vegetation underneath the deck. Has that a common practice?
Um, you know, we'd probably do some infiltration gravel, but we're fine with kind of smaller, you know, like currents and other smaller items, if they will happen to grow underneath there. But the, the goal is to leave it free, open air.
Yeah, I thought it was just a little bit curious that-
We're not, we're not planning to plant stuff there, but if it happens to grow, you know, there are certain things that will grow in kind of shade environments, so.
Yeah. Other than you don't want too much, because I imagine the fire department would have a problem with that.
Correct. Yeah, they need to be more like a herbaceous, kind of like a fern or something like that. And, you know, we'll, we'll let, we'll see what nature does, but obviously, we have to comply with the fire district.
Okay.
Any, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Bring it back to the Board. Close public hearing and discussion. A motion?
Was there some public wanting to talk?
Oh, excuse me, yes. Was there anybody from the public who wanted to address? I didn't think so. No. Thank you.
I can make a motion if you'd like. I would move that the commission approve the subdivision modification to allow for a 16-foot front setback measured from the property line in order to allow construction of a garage entry feature, and to allow for a 29-foot water core setback from the center line of Bear Creek for the construction of a lower patio and upper deck addition to the existing residence, subject to the following. Well, I would add that, that we would require that they come to an agreement with Alpine Springs County Water District on the encroachment, potential encroachment into the easement.
Do we hear a second?
Well, would that, would that be additional wording in the conditions that you were talking about here? I guess asking staff.
You know, as Alex pointed out, on condition eight, it basically indicates that the applicant shall comply with any conditions imposed by the Alpine Springs Water District. So with that condition, I believe the, the applicant, or the Alpine Springs Water District can impose any condition they feel is appropriate, so they could allow them to encroach into the, the easement, or they could say, no, you have to stay out of it, so.
Well, I'll modify my, I'll modify my motion to express that.
We need you to include in that a motion that the finding of an exemption under CEQA.
Oh, yes, right. Yeah. That, that it has an exemption, the CEQA exemption.
Second?
Okay, having moved and seconded, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Proceed to our next agenda item, a subdivision map modification, Cabral Ranch, and we got two in a row from Alex.
Yes, sir. I'm back. Let me get to the correct PowerPoint. Thank you all. Hopefully, I didn't butcher that too badly for Stacy. This one I know a little bit better. This was my, my project initially as well. So the item before you now for your consideration is a modification to an approved vesting tentative map for the Cabral Ranch subdivision. That subdivision was heard and approved by the commission in December of 2008. This is just a quick orientation here. We are approximately one mile to the south of the city of Roseville, city limits at Baseline Road, just immediately south of Vineyard Road, adjacent to the Morgan Creek planned residential development. The, I believe it's called Creekview Ranch. Middle School is, I believe, on this property here, actually, and then we have some rural residential sites around us. It's a little better view of that. So, the applicant's request is to modify the approved tentative map, which you can see here, this is the overall site plan for that map that was approved, in order to permit a gated entry for the private subdivision roadway. Of course, that, if I can get this to work, that private gated entry would be out in this area. So this is the approved configuration of the subdivision. Next slide shows the proposed revised vesting tentative map with the gated entry feature out here. You see this bell-shaped feature that would modify the subdivision entry to include a gate out at this portion. This is a median to help define travel lanes and turnaround area, and then there's another small median here for the, for the gate controls and structural features. Otherwise, if I flip back here, you will see that the subdivision lotting design is largely the same. It's unmodified. There have been some minor modifications to it to accommodate the, the gated entry feature, namely that the roadway shifted slightly to the north, and some of the lot sizes were, were changed very slightly. This is a, an overall plan view and elevation view of the gated entry. And so what we have here is Cookreola Road out here, edge of the right-of-way. There is a five-foot meandering decomposed granite path that the subdivision would construct along its frontage. There's an earthen sound berm that's landscaped, that is part of the subdivision conditions of approval. That's all within a landscape easement, setback easement, that includes that noise barrier. And then, of course, we have the gated entry feature back here. This would be a double-leaf design, one leaf for each travel lane. There are pilasters on either side, as you see down here, and then these fencing features that extend down to just the edge of this easement here, to kind of complete the, the semi-formal look of the subdivision entry. Notably, there is also a pedestrian gate. That gate would be left open during the day, and that is obviously for the residents of the subdivision. This is just a cross-section view of that same lands, or landscaped earthen berm in the roadway frontage. Again, you have the decomposed granite path out here, roadway out here, and the subdivision is back beyond here. These are views of the project site as you're traveling in either direction down Cookreola Road. One of the things that staff had to analyze when, when making consideration of this request was how the proposal fits in with the existing community. As you can see from these photographs, it is a rural area. The Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan is largely a rural community plan that has been designated some 20 years ago for development of additional residential housing at densities that are beyond what have, have historically existed here. One of the, several of the policies in that plan kind of speak to the effect of new development on the existing rural character of that community, and how to harmonize the effect of that with the existing character, how to blend it, and how to ensure that the character of that development is, is pleasing and distinct from the character of some of the communities to the south in Sacramento County, that by virtue of the, the language in the community plan are, are less desirable in their, in their overall character. Something that you'll see as you drive around that community is a lot of rural estates and ranchettes that have a mixture along their frontage of semi-formal, formal landscaping with wrought iron fences, open split rail fences, field fences that typically include pilasters and gates. There's frequently informal trail networks along the roadways. And then, similarly, the new developments that have been approved over the last several years, namely Doyle Ranch, Morgan Creek, Reelo Greens, Whisper Creek, some of those subdivisions, are, are characteristic of what this development would be, where they have kind of blended the effect of that rural environment with a more modern aesthetic of a residential subdivision, but with the intent that you maintain the overall character of the community plan area. Notably, there are community plans in Placer County that specifically address whether or not gates and gated entries should be constructed and under what conditions. The Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan includes no such policies, neither do the Rural Design Guidelines. So the, the previously described analysis was part of the, the staff's framework for, for making these considerations. Hopefully, this is going to work. Try to advance it. Okay. So with that, staff's recommendation is to adopt the addendum to the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration that is included in your packet. That addendum includes some minor technical modifications to the previously adopted environmental analysis, but there were no new impacts determined to result from this proposal. The recommendation also includes approval of the revised test, vesting tentative subdivision map, subject to the findings and conditions in staff's report. And lastly, we'd like to include in your motion, or ask you to include in your motion, acknowledgement that condition numbers 60, 61, 63, and 66 have been completed. Those conditions are relative to the applicant's requirement to obtain Army Corps of Engineers verification for wetlands fill, and then completion of requirements to mitigate for fill of those wetlands. So in other words, purchasing mitigation credits and getting a grading permit and then completing the work. So with that, I am available to answer any questions. I do have the applicant's representative, Tony Gallus, here as well, and obviously, engineering and surveying staff is on hand if you have questions for them.
Yeah, I noticed that there's several easement changes that I didn't really see a discussion in the report, where there was like a 100-foot road easement on the front of the property and, and the original conditions that were eliminated this time. It looks like now we're just requiring, where there was a sewer easement of some kind, but now it's an access requirement. Could you give a little background on what the easement changes or what caused them?
Phil Franz, Engineering and Surveying. The right-of-way requirements for the original approval was based on the previous community plan, which required more dedication of right-of-way along Cookreola Road. Since that time, the community plan has been revised, where we don't need as much right-of-way, so what they have today is adequate, so we changed that requirement. I don't believe we changed any sewer easement requirements. I'm not sure which condition you're talking to, to. We did add some public support easements, which is our current language for some of the easement requirements. And then we removed the dedication, the requirement for an irrevocable offer of dedication over the onsite subdivision roadway, because they are now gating it, so we will never accept-
Okay, I guess where it was coming from is, under the now number 59B, it's talking about a roadway easement, but I guess now it's private. Maybe at one time, we were considering making it a county road.
Correct.
But also, it talks about utility easements there.
Yeah, so originally, it was a private road easement, and with the private road easement, we get, our code requires to get an offer of dedication for that, that we could accept in the future, but since they're now gating it, we will never accept that, so we delete that requirement.
Okay, and so that's why we added the part about access for the sewer maintenance?
So condition number 59A, the one right above that, they still dedicate a public utility easement across the onsite.
Okay. And then it looks like we added access through the gate with the codes and that kind of stuff?
Yes, correct, for, for sewer access.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Question. Is the plan for that road, just remain a two-lane road with no left-hand turn lanes in it?
Correct.
Yeah. And it looked like from the pictures that there's a school right nearby. Is that right next door?
Yes, the Creekview Ranch Middle School is approximately 200 yards to the south on the opposite side of the roadway.
Any other questions?
I have one for engineering. When are you going to finish the bridge?
That's actually probably for the Public Works Department. I don't know the answer to that.
I hear no more questions. I'll open the discussion to the public, if anyone would like to address the Board. We step forward.
The applicant?
Applicant, me, would perhaps. Twenty members. Mr. Gallus.
Good morning. I am Tony Gallus. Appreciate being here. Hi. Alex did a fantastic job. I would only like to stress that I, the original approval of the 12-lot, very small subdivision, was very much adhering to the community plan, and it remains so, with the exception of that bell-shaped change of the entryway. The gate is being set back a long ways in. The gate is being set back a long ways in. The one comment that Alex made, the pedestrian small gate to the side is to remain open. I think we both were thinking the same thing. It can be closed, just not locked.
Right.
Yeah. So the pedestrian traffic, kids going to and from school, have no hindrance. The other reason for that was we don't want to have the traffic kids to start climbing over the berm that is to separate the development from Cook Riola Road. So all of that kind of made a lot of sense. Alex was very firm about, excuse me, about the material that's going to be used for the gate, gates, and the pedestals. It is all very much to be earth tones, and again, being set back quite a bit further into the subdivision. The idea was so that it is not very overwhelming, obnoxious type of a feature when you're driving up and down Cook Riola Road. The sewer easement is also, not only obviously in the new proposed cul-de-sac to serve all the properties, but there's also a sewer easement to be at the end of the cul-de-sac going north to provide a potential service for those existing homes that are there that they can, but they don't have to, get the service from the newly installed sewer in that new cul-de-sac, if that maybe was what you were asking about the sewer.
Yeah, I think so. I just wanted to understand the changes.
None of that has changed. That is still there. And maybe expanding on the 60, 61, 63, and 66, those conditions have been satisfied through the proper, I want to apply for the grading permit to deal with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers issues, and that is to fill the wetlands. I needed the grading permit. That has been all done. The mitigation has been paid, and so has the, and I don't remember exactly the numbers, but so has the foraging habitat fee has been also paid. So just expanding on what Alex stated previously.
I guess I do have kind of one additional question, and maybe we addressed this when it came before us before, but there's one parcel at the end of the cul-de-sac that apparently is really not part of this proposal. They were there, I guess, existed before. Was there access through this parcel before, or how are they being affected by what we're talking about here?
There is. This 12 and orbit acre parcel is, if you'd like, a rectangular shape with the northwest corner cut off, and that, I believe, is very close to two acres. It's kind of outside this, otherwise pretty much a rectangular shape. Those, there's an existing home that has actually been very much upgraded and enlarged. Currently, they are using, if I may. They're using, along the very north property line, there is a, yes, there is an easement and a driveway for their personal use to get to and from their home. They actually recently had a fence, I believe six-foot metal fence installed, and they have a gate at the end of this long driveway. The plan and Mr. and Mrs. Hamid's still agreement is to abandon that access. Their driveway will be removed and somewhat repatriated from the project also, and so they will have an access to their, to their property through the new cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And that, their option, they can also tie into the modern sewer services in the new cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson, I would just add that that is reflected in the conditions of approval as approved, and there's also documentation in the county's project file from the Hamids providing their tentative agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now I'll open it up to the public for any comments, and seeing none, I'll close the public and bring you back for discussion, or let's start off with hearing the motions.
Well, nobody will make a motion. I'll move that we approve the vesting tentative map modification, subject to the findings, the sequel findings, 1, 2, and 3, and acknowledge that conditions 60, 61, 63, 66 have been completed. And let's see.
And adopt the negative declaration.
Yeah. And just invest the tentative map modifications is itemized in our agenda.
We want to make sure and also include in the recommendation that we're adopting the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration.
Yeah, and adopt the, I put that in there too.
Second. Moved in second. I'll call for a vote. On favor?
I oppose.
Motion carries.
We'll give it a minute and we'll start on.
Do you want these maps?
You want the maps?
If they're not useful, then I would appreciate it.
You'd never know. Yeah.
Here you go, Tony.
Okay, I'm here today to present the Black Hawk Lane Minor Land Division and rezone. This property is located at 6960 Black Hawk Lane, approximately 1.4 miles north of the intersection of Forest Hill Road and Block Hef Lane in the Forest Hill area. The property is currently zoned residential forestry with a building site designation of 160 acres. Hold on just one moment. This would be the 160-acre portion here, and this portion over here is zoned residential forestry with a building site designation of 20 acres. Characteristics of the project site include sloping downward to the west and north sides of the property towards Black Hawk Canyon Creek. Elevations on the site range between 3,300 and 3,400 square feet. The site is already developed with a single-family residence and appurtenances. The applicant is requesting that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of Supervisors for a rezone to change the subject property from RFBX 160-acre minimum, which is residential forestry 160, and he would like to change that to residential forestry with a building site of 20 acres to be consistent with the remainder of the property. The minor land division, excuse me, will result in a designated remainder of 32.7 acres and a second parcel, which will be parcel one, consisting of 21.7 acres. This is the site plan, the proposal for the minor land division. The designated portion, I apologize. This portion here is the designated portion, which is the 30, approximately 31-acre property, and that will be the designated, the one that is previously developed. And the new parcel right here that sits right on Black Hawk Lane is the 21 and a half-acre parcel, and that will be zoned to 20 acres, so it's right around that requirement. Okay, I'd like to go into a little history of the property. This property, part of it was Lot 2, and it was created as a portion of the Black Oak Ridge subdivision in Forest Hill area, which is about an 18-lot subdivision. This is Lot 2 here. This whole portion right here is Lot 2, so it's bisected by Black Hawk Lane, but all of that is the approximately 40-acre property that was created with the subdivision. And in 2001, Mr. Kramer did a minor land division with Mr. Davey. This is, again, this is again the property, how it existed. This is Mr. Davey here, and this is Mr. Kramer. And then they did a boundary line adjustment. Now Mr. Davey's parcel is this, and it's about, it's around 20 acres, and this is the new Mr. Kramer property, which resulted in a approximately, well, combined with his, it was then 53 acres. So here's Mr. Kramer's property. And now, this is what he wants to do. He wants to split the property into here. This would be 20 acres, as is stated, and this is just the zoning of the property. And I put this in here just to point out that his property will be consistent with the property that is around him. His parcel's right here is zoned 160 acres, but right on the other side of it is a 20-acre zoning, and then on this side of it is a 20-acre zoning, and the parcels all surrounding it are less than 20 acres. So it is consistent with the properties surrounding it and with the community plan, which is zoned for 4.6 to 20-acre minimum. And with that, I complete my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll just first.
You know what?
It's on my phone.
I apologize. Just real quick, I forgot our recommendation. Our recommendation is to approve the minor land division and the rezone and request that you forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to approve the rezone.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little bit confused. You said that, well, let's go back. What part of this parcel was already zoned at 20 acres?
This portion here was zoned 20 acres.
Was?
Or is, and is zoned 20 acres.
So none of Kramer's property before was, before they did the minor boundary adjustment was zoned 20 acres?
Yes, it was. This has always been, in fact, this right here, I'm sorry, this all right here, that is zoned 20-acre minimum.
Okay.
This is the portion that is zoned 160-acre minimum. So all of this is a 20-acre minimum, and the reason why he has to rezone it is because we have a provision in the zoning ordinance that says when there are two zonings on a property, the one that is most restrictive prevails. So he has to do this rezoning in order to make this a 20-acre parcel, and that way he can split it.
I guess I almost don't understand that, but let me see, now the purple parcel.
Yeah.
That's going to be, that's going to be one of the, a little bit larger parcel.
Correct.
And so the eastern half of that was previously, or the whole thing was zoned 160 before?
No, just the only, only this portion right here.
Uh-huh.
Where that line is right there, that's the cutoff.
Yeah, and so then why, if he owned the western portion of that parcel before, why did he have to go through a rezoning on this?
Well, he, you mean this portion right here?
Yeah.
Because the zoning ordinance says if there's, because he has two zonings on the property. He has 20 acres and he has 160 acres.
And he's always had that before, right?
Correct.
So what's the change here?
The change is that he wants to rezone this portion, the 20 acres, to 20 acres from 160. And the reason is because the zoning ordinance says, okay, you have 160 and you have 20. Well, 160 is more restrictive. They're both on the same property, so 160 prevails because that's the more restrictive. So he needs to change this portion to 20. Since it's 53 acres, he wants to rezone it to the 20 so that he can split it into two parcels, because the 160 wouldn't allow for that.
Well, he's, yeah, well, I guess I'll just accept I understand it, but it seems like if there's not a change there, then why, and you know, why would he have to rezone it unless it was at his request?
It's at his request because he can't, he can't split it unless he rezones it because, let me put it this way.
So he's looking at splitting the purple parcel in the future, but it's already going to, it's going to be down to just a little over 20?
It will be less than 20 acres, so if it's a 20-acre minimum, he won't be able to split it any further, and he won't be able to split either one of them any further because neither one, well, and the way that I think could explain it properly is basically because this is 160 acres, it's treated like the entire thing is 160 acres.
But you said it was already zoned 20.
A portion of it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he can't, he can't go, okay, there's 20, 20 acres here, so I'm just going to cut off a portion of my property, because he can't do that since the 160 is basically overlaying the whole thing. I think I'm just making it worse. I apologize.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, because I think everything west of, it sounds like everything west where the Davey is, where it says Davey on the.
Yeah, and this is.
So everything in the green, and there's a line that goes north-south there.
Yes.
So everything west of that was already zoned 20?
Correct.
And so he already had split zoning on his property?
Yes.
Let me see if I can also clarify what Melanie was saying is that dash line that runs through the purple parcel, the rezone request pertains to the right-hand, right-hand side only. It's not uncommon in a lot of the areas of Placer County to see two different zoning on one parcel like this. And as Melanie was saying, for him to split into these two parcels, the more restrictive zoning would apply, and because part of the purple parcel is now zoned 160 acres, he couldn't do this split unless the entire purple parcel becomes the 20-acre minimum. So the rezone request before you is simply for that right-hand side to be brought to the 20-acre zoning so that he can do this split into two.
Between the purple and all the, and the, and the green. 53 between those two. They wouldn't be able to draw that one line there between the two without bringing that because it's, because that portion.
To the right there of the purple is 160, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the green was already 20-acre, right?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
That's correct. And so in the western half of the purple was 20.
Correct. It's the.
And so it's, is this just a requirement that before you can?
Before he can split into the two that you have now. The proposal is to now split, and because the 160-acre zoning right now would control the minimum parcel size, he couldn't do the split. That's why he needs to rezone that portion of his property so that he can do the split that he's proposing.
Is this just a county rule to clean up split parcels?
Well, it's a zoning code requirement that, and as, you know, with any kind of parcel map, you have to establish that it's consistent with the zoning. We can't create a parcel that is less than the minimum size required by the zoning. And because you've got the split, as Melanie was explaining, it's the more restrictive zoning that applies, which is 160 acre. Now, that seems a little illogical, but if you think about it, it's more restrictive because it requires a greater amount of acreage for that parcel. That's why it's considered more restrictive. So in order to allow him to go ahead with this request, he has to bring that zoning down so that we end up with a parcel map that has minimum acreage that is consistent with underlying zoning. Otherwise, we couldn't approve the parcel map.
I think I'm beginning to get it. He has a choice of either going to 20 or 160 for the whole thing.
Well, if he went 160, he wouldn't be able to split. I mean, for him to split and to have these two, he has to. I mean, for him to split and to have these two, he has to come up with a zoning. Now, he could have come up with a zoning, and, and as you noticed in the staff report, at one point, there was even a smaller zoning proposed, but the MAC came back, and so now we really want to see it at the twenty acre, which is why you have a twenty acre request in front of you now. So in looking at this and splitting it, he had a myriad of choices available to him for zoning. And I won't go into all the details of making sure you're consistent with the community plan, general plan, et cetera, et cetera. But what he has chose now is to request the twenty acre minimum, and that will allow him to split it. If he was to stay with one hundred and sixty, we couldn't approve a split because the minimum acre, acreage for that Lot Two
Okay.
would be less than.
It's because he's changing the property boundary lines.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
He had to go one way or the other.
I have a question. There was a letter that was sent by the HOA expressing some concern. Was that addressed?
Yes, it was addressed. There's a condition of approval. And what it's requiring is that a portion of the property, the portion that was originally in the subdivision, it's going to annex into that subdivision. And then it will be subject to the Homeowners Association and the CCRs for that subdivision.
So the part that we've been talking about that's in the zoned one hundred and sixty, are they saying that would, they want that as a part of it under the HOA? Because I'm assuming that everything that was to the left of that line that was in the twenty acres is within the development. Is that correct or not correct?
Um, this portion here, make sure I got the right one here. This portion is the original parcel, parcel two of the subdivision. So he acquired this portion of that lot as a part of his property when he did the minor boundary.
And that's in the development, that's in the HOA?
Yeah, the green portion is in the development.
The purple part was not in the HOA at all?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
And it's not anymore? It won't be, or?
Yeah, that parcel will no, will not be in the subdivision at all.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hello, and good afternoon. I'm Mike Miller with Hogan Land Services, the applicant for the subdivision and lot land, or the zone change. Going through the report, we're happy with essentially everything except, I had a question and hope to modify, I think it was item nine of the easements. Or is that page highlighted? There's a no access strip request so that all of Lot Two, the green area on the bottom, there's a driveway design. They want to have only one driveway and then a strip that precludes any other future driveways from ever being constructed on that property. And we'd like to instead, having the strip on it, add a note to the lot that says any future driveways will conform to driveway standards. So that it's not a blanket denial, but just ensures that everything's up to code in the future.
Which number is that in the?
It was a general dedication easements, number nine, page two of nine. Yeah. As you can, that's a good one, actually, in the sense that it shows the proposed driveway, which is for the current subdivision, you have the proposed new driveway that meets the county standards of like seventeen. And there's two existing driveways that don't meet the standard. But there are at least one other place along that parcel that would satisfy the standards per the report prepared when it was back on a four lot subdivision. And not that they have any plans to do it, but we don't see any reason to unnecessarily burden something with a blanket restriction rather than a, hey, just make sure it works in the future and up to code statement.
Phil Franz, engineering and surveying. So when the original submittal came forward, it was actually a four lot parcel split. And where parcel one is today, this parcel, we looked at driveway locations for those three parcels. That this, this particular parcel was going to be split into three. As you can see, the roadway has lots of curves in it. And so to meet the appropriate site distance, they had to locate the driveways in certain spots along that road so that it could, people could see coming and going. What we found was that there was a driveway location in this spot right here that worked for two parcels that were in this location. And then the remaining parcel that was down here had a driveway location right here that was acceptable to public works. This driveway location is shown right here, achieved a greater site distance and was a safer location than this driveway location that was right here. So since the parcel was modified to just be one lot in this location, we decided to restrict the access to the safer driveway location in this spot right here. And that's, and that's also included in the environmental document as a mitigation measure for the no access strip. We just identified this as the safer option, and so that's where we want the driveway to be constructed. The driveway is also required to be constructed prior to the final map recordation in this location. And the existing driveway locations that are there without permits are required to be removed and re-vegetated.
Okay, I think, you know, I think that we can probably discuss this after we finish, yeah.
Now, open the meeting to the public for any comment. You step forward and give us your name, if you would.
My name is George McCafferty. There were a couple of minor concerns with some of the other owners who live down in the development and the members of the HOA. One of the big problems or issues was the twenty acre minimum. So it sounds like that's already been addressed as per the findings of the MAC and the homeowners. Because back in the hearings in nineteen eighty-nine, when the whole subdivision was done, twenty minimum, twenty was supposed to be the minimum. So we just wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to be congested in that area. There is no fire protection in this area, no hydrants. The nearest hydrant is back at Forest Hill Road, about a mile and a half away. So we wanted to find out how that would be addressed, because if we're adding more lots, we're adding more people. So we wanted to make sure that there was going to be some kind of fire mitigation for that area for getting back into that one hundred and sixty acre, I guess, zoned division. And then finally, that the parcels, because these are part of the subdivision through a minor boundary line adjustment, they should be part of the HOA. They shouldn't be able to skirt the responsibilities of being in the HOA because the HOA fees cover road maintenance, sanding, because it gets very icy during the winters, and snow removal. So because these lots basically are, are part of that and through an MBL, minor boundary line adjustment, seem to be trying to skirt the responsibility of being part of the Homeowners Association, paying those fees for the road maintenance. So I just wanted to make sure that those issues would be somehow adjusted so that, you know, they're on the same playing field as the rest of the people in development.
I see you are acknowledging that parcel one already has been agreed to be part of the HOA?
I don't know if they have agreed to be part of the HOA or not.
No, I mean, the lower parcel in this parcel split, there is a condition that would require that one to become part of the HOA.
For the, the one on the road, but the one behind it on the one hundred and sixty acre zone portion is gonna have to go through that to get to the road. So they would be, you know, de facto part of the association because their property uses the same road services as the parcel that abuts the road.
Okay, well, we can, we can pursue that a little bit.
Thank you.
Could you clarify that, Paul?
That portion that he's talking about has never been part of the Homeowners Association or that subdivision, and it's not required to annex into the subdivision. The only portion we're asking to annex into the subdivision is that one that was originally a portion of two. So that's the one on the bottom.
Okay. Does that, does that parcel, I guess we're calling it parcel two now, or the purple parcel?
That parcel, the purple parcel, I think, is the one up north. And then the parcel one is going to be the one to the south. And that is the portion that was part of parcel two of the Black Oak Ridge subdivision. And that's the portion that will need to annex into the, into that subdivision.
I guess what my question is, is parcel two, I guess, does that access the subdivision road?
It does, I think, I think it does. Yeah, it does, and it already has a driveway off of that road. But I think, I think what's important here is that nothing's really changing as far as the subdivision is concerned, as far as who is going to be, you know, subject to the HOA standards and the CCNRs as a part of the subdivision. It's actually already in there, and there's already fees being paid to the Homeowners Association, and that's not going to change. That's why we're requiring the annex.
Okay, so I guess what we're hearing is that the parcel two is benefiting from the Homeowners Association but not required to pay into it? But that's the way it's been?
It's, that's the way it's been.
Okay. Have a question, Larry?
No, I, I think the colored map's easier to follow than.
Yeah.
Can we switch back to the colored map?
This right here is what it looks like right now. So parcel two, if I can, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't seem to reach it with the laser.
That's the purple parcel.
Okay. Okay, so right here, this is Lot Two. All of this is Lot Two in that subdivision. And see this portion that's hatched here? That is gonna be, that's gonna remain in the subdivision, and that's the portion that's subject to the HOA and gonna annex into the subdivision.
None of the purple is part of the HOA at this time?
The purple is not part of the HOA at this time. And that's the, the reason is because that was never part of that subdivision.
So doesn't the corner of the purple that was traded earlier, was that part of the, is that part of the HOA?
That's actually true, yeah. That portion is part of the HOA.
So there is a portion of the purple parcel that is within the HOA, right?
Uh, yeah.
But remember, that portion was incorporated into the Davy Lot Two, the, the upper parcel. Okay, so that's actually now part of that other parcel.
Oh, okay. Right, okay. It's really, it's not purple anymore.
Right, it is, it is, but it isn't.
So there would be no additional impact on the Homeowners Association as a result of the, the purple part annexing to the green part at the bottom because it's still one part, it'll just be one use. And until they try to subdivide it, if they subdivide it sometime in the future, or try to, then they would have to ask for annexation to the homeowners, or could, if they wanted to, to get.
I don't know, I mean, I think it would depend on what came forward. I think what's important to remember is what's referred to as the remainder of the Kramer parcel is, and already has a house on it. And it's, in other words, it's already developed. It's not uncommon to have parcels close to a subdivision, and when a, a new subdivision comes in, that becomes, and has an HOA. Obviously, the portion of the subdivision is subject to the CCNRs and the HOA. Adjoining parcels that are not part of that subdivision wouldn't be part of it unless they privately requested and arranged for annexation to that subdivision. The county can't require that the Kramer parcel be annexed into a subdivision. It never was part of that subdivision. We are requiring because the Lot Two, being part of a larger parcel that was part of that subdivision, we're requiring that it remain annexed into that subdivision. So we're essentially retaining the same HOA CCNR encumbrances as was applied to that larger parcel back when.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the unhatched portion of the Kramer parcel there, does that access through the subdivision road?
Yeah.
But at this point in time, he's not obligated to participate in road maintenance or anything like that?
As far, it, I, it's not part of the subdivision now. So unless he came up with a private arrangement with the Homeowners Association, that parcel would not, you know, it'll access it, but is not subject to those fees now.
I guess the question, is that road a private road? Or is it a public road?
Black Hawk Lane is the county maintained road.
Okay, so.
It was for private HOA funds. There was a whole escrow account that was turned over to the county so the county would administer it, but all the homeowners pay a specific fee for the maintenance of that. Didn't you build one?
Well, yeah, we don't need that discussion in the audience at this time.
Okay.
I, I'm sort of confused on this. Let me see if I can clear, clear it up in my mind. In other words, originally.
Before there was the Black Hawk owners, it was all one parcel and then sort of cut out of it when they came in and developed the subdivision. And then they came to terms, I guess I'm sort of in my mind trying to compare it with other instances where I've seen where you have a parcel, somebody comes in and develops it, and then they're responsible for the road and everything else, and the person that was originally there has access through it, and whatever binding conditions are put on the subdivision, or on the subdivision, not on the original owner. Is that correct? So that's sort of, that clears it up for me. And I, so I guess this is the same instance with that parcel, any question?
How would you address the question that was brought up about fire, fire protection?
If you look on, on your conditions of approval, there's a, and it's condition four, there's a requirement for a will serve letter for this project, and it, it's for the Fire Protection District, Forest Hill Fire District and CAL FIRE. So with that will serve requirement, the serving fire district can place any condition they feel is necessary in order to issue that will serve letter. So if they need a hydrant, or whatever it may be, the fire district will require that.
I'd also direct you to page forty-three of your report. Under discussion, there's a discussion, Roman numeral sixteen dash four, serving fire districts has reviewed the proposed project and has not identified any impacts to emergency access. So within the, the secret review, the fire district did review this.
Thank you. Any further questions?
In that case, I'll close the public comment period.
Oh, you got one more public comment, I think.
Oh, did we? I'm sorry. Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Robert Milel. I'm representing the Black Oak Ridge Homeowners Association. Everybody else is absent, so I got elected to the position. But we, the only contention that was brought up originally was the fact that these properties weren't in the Black Oak Ridge subdivision. I guess that's been addressed, and, and portions of it are in the Black Oak Ridge. And we just wanted to make sure that it was, the CCNRs were upheld at the twenty acre minimum and whatnot. But for clarification for the planning commission, we're, we're looking at a map here, but you got to understand, Black Hawk Lane, that's about two miles in off of Forest Hill Road. Black Hawk Lane is a one-lane paved road. So any additional properties is going to impact the ability for, you know, access in and out of there, especially in the case of a fire. There's only one way in and one way out of this area. And I understand Mr. Kramer, as far as the CSA, the, the money for maintaining the roads. I understand his position that he was there before, and the road was put in, even though the road was put in after he was there, he's not part of that, and I understand that on his portion that he owns. But I would think that anybody who would come in later, if it was subdivided, wanted to build, whatnot, I would think that those people should have to pay into the CSA for road maintenance, for snow plow and so forth, and resurfacing the road and whatnot. Because in lieu of the county paying for it, us homeowners that are living in Black Oak Ridge and Black Hawk Estates right now are, you know, cover that burden. And anybody else that comes in at a later time, I would think, would need to be a portion of that. But the Black Oak Ridge Homeowners Association, if it's twenty acres minimum, we, we have no complaint with that. We, we're not trying to tell Mr. Kramer what he can do with his property or can't do. But our only concern was the twenty acre minimum, and it seems to be addressed. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, statements from the public? In that case, now I'll close the public meeting and.
We need to go back to... Say, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I think we need to go back and, uh, uh, get more discussion on the, uh, access request to the, the green parcel, where, uh, they're limited to one...
The driveway.
One driveway, and there may be, uh, two. You know, I, I think we've heard the rationale, I guess I can think of a reason where a person would want to have, uh, what would you call it, a utility access, or, or something like that? But, you know, that's just something that I could see where they would want that, even though it's not a subdivision type thing. It's, I can see where somebody would want to, but...
The one thing I'd like to point out about this no-access strip is it is a mitigation measure that was identified in the, um, SEQA document. And if the commission is considering the removal of that, I would prefer staff, uh, be able to determine whether it can be removed and not result in an impact. Um, so this is not just a condition. A condition can be treated a little different. When it's a mitigation measure, you have to look at it in the context of the SEQA document.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. Okay, any other, just falling on that line of discussion, Richard?
Oh, okay, I guess staff is discussing it now, so...
That we're going to hear from them?
Well, I think so. We'll see.
I think the applicant even mentioned it. His goal was not to have multiple driveways, but to be able to have a driveway in some other location and move it from place to place as long as it was still acceptable to, to, uh, the county. So I don't, I don't think we're looking at adding driveways necessarily. I think we're looking at, is, what, a location that is more appropriate for whatever they plan to do there someday. But they'd still have to have the county sign off on it, as I understand it.
Yeah, and, and I guess, I sort of heard that there was potential that there was the best location, and then there was one, potentially one more that maybe is not as good as the location that you pick, but it would be just between those two, one access between those two areas.
That, that's correct. Again, we, we analyzed this during the environmental review process to determine the best locations for access. At that time, there were three lots in, in the, in the bottom parcel being proposed, instead of just one. So we needed to find a second spot. We found a second spot that was going to be a shared driveway location. When that proposal went away, and it was just going to be one lot, then they only need one driveway. So we are recommending to you that we approve the safest driveway location that they have available. I'm not sure if the applicant wants the ability for no, a no-access strip to be eliminated along the entire frontage, or just along the point where this second access that, that could be considered is, is available. But at this point, we would recommend that the, the one location that we felt was the safest be the location for the access to this lot.
I think that's reasonable. I mean, it's, it's, it's one parcel. If one of these days somebody comes in and decides to split it, then, of course, then the other driveway entrances become the issue or become evident. But I think the one, especially from a safety, especially we've heard, I've never been on that road, but if that's narrow and that's single and that twisted, I would think that safety would be a, a key. Or else you could have, you know, four or five different accesses along the road if you didn't put some kind of restrictions on it. I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with this requirement.
Any other further discussion or questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, I hear you.
Jeffrey?
One more question to staff, I guess. As you, as you move along from the proposed access strip where it was shown, and you move on up north, and you come back to the purple area, is that dotted line still the no-access strip? Is it continuing all along there? Is that my understanding?
The no-access strip would only be along the new parcel one, kind of the, the green area of this one that's part of the, the parcel map. So it doesn't extend up into the purple remainder parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moss?
The no-access strip, is this just a, a line on a map?
Yes.
Or is this a physical barrier you're asking?
It's, it's a line on a map that would restrict access so that if they came in and tried to get access at a different location, we would say, no, you can't have access there. It's got to be in this location.
And, and the mitigation measure just deals with the location of that access, or just the fact that there's only one of them?
The mitigation measure was written because there were, at the time, only two access points that we were comfortable approving.
But, so should keep in, in line with the, the SEQA application, does that limit us to just one lo- one location or just one driveway? Which is, which is the mitigation, the number of driveways, or its location?
I think as far as the no-access strip goes, it's to put a driveway in a location that is safe. If, if that...
Well, I, I guess what I mean, we're, we're concerned about changing the, the questionnaire and the, the grounds, the mitigation measure in, in the, the environmental document. If it's just the number of driveways, then we could have him allowed one driveway at a location to be approved by the county, instead of a no-access strip and, and all this, and still comply with our environmental document. If it's the location of the driveway that's a mitigating measure, then that doesn't work.
It's, it's also the location, because we've already looked at where it would be safe to put driveways. We've gone through that process. So we came up with two spots at the time.
And I guess, I just, did the applicant participate in that review?
Yes.
Any other questions?
That, the, the restriction just runs as the parcel's the size, but if, say in the future, for whatever reason, they, there was a rezone that would come in and they'd make it smaller parcels and stuff. Actually, to alter that, then, um, that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect any future. I mean, he could come in at any time and, and propose, you know, a new driveway somewhere else, but he would have to basically mitigate the narrow road and everything. I mean, put in, um, turn lanes and all, all that.
If, if the applicant came forward at some, some future time to, to add additional parcels to this parcel one, uh, we definitely would look at driveway locations at that point...
And road improvements.
In time, and, and attempt to find safe locations for those driveway improvements. It wouldn't preclude him ever from accessing again. We would look at it at that point in time with that parcel map application.
So that, that parcel is only, if I'm reading this right, twenty-one point seven acres. And if there's twenty acre minimum, that's never going to be split. Unless it, it would have to come back to the county to approve that it's being able to go down less than twenty acres.
Correct.
So that's just not going to happen.
Well, you can shoot the arrow. The, the green's going to merge with the purple.
I'm kind of questioning why we would have a no-access strip too.
So that green and purple are going to be one parcel that's going to be subdivisible at some time.
Right.
So, so when they come back and re-parcel it, then they'll have to deal with the driveway issue at that time.
At that time.
That's the way I see it, I guess.
So just so, in my mind, I'm clear, the hatched green part and the purple will become one... Property? Or they remain two separate? Question for staff? That's, that, that green section there, right? That's part of the subdivision. When it's joined to the purple part, is that correct? As far as just the zoning, the zoning covers for both of them?
Um, yeah.
Okay. They remain two separate properties, but the zoning is consistent on both of them? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Want me to change it? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you have the option of retaining the discussion if you want.
It's just the applicant, I think, is all.
Step forward and we'll hear just one, one briefly.
I'll be quite brief. I just wanted to address several of the issues, is that...
One issue. Just what we are in discussion of right now.
Well, you were addressing the roads and also the zoning, correct?
Uh, well, I'm interested primarily in the driveway access only.
Yes. The SEQA document was prepared with two driveways, analyzed for impacts and accepted. The, we're not even trying to get more than the original SEQA document, document with the mitigated, mitigated negative deck. So it, it... To me, it's becoming, um, there, there are several facts that didn't appear to be correct in the discussion, and I just wanted to point out that two of them were studied, two of them were accepted. The safest was required now that there's only one house. And we don't want to stop the safety, we just want to allow for the opportunity for an additional driveway if anyone who buys it in the future wants it.
So if they, if you have an, uh, um, you have to have a parcel split, right, to do that?
That's, that's what we're doing. The zoning is concurrent with the subdivision. Where we applied for a subdivision originally to what is now the green hatched area, was acquired with a lot line adjustment, and my client wanted to subdivide that off as two separate parcels. Because the green hatched and the western portion of the purple are twenty acres, but the easterly portion of the purple is a hundred and sixty acres, entire property's been burdened with a hundred and sixty acre zone restriction. And so the application was to say, apply the twenty acre zone to the entire purple property so that, and which is also the green per hatch property currently, because they are one legal parcel. And to allow that zoning change to go forwards, though we can go with the subdivision, to effectively recreate the line that originally existed between the purple and the green.
Okay. Thank you. I'll bring that back to the board.
Let me see, I have a question on the, uh, I guess what we're hearing on the driveway. Apparently, in the past, you've agreed to only have one driveway?
Never. No, I, I...
Okay, I guess, at least that's what we're hearing. I mean, you were involved in discussion...
No.
And the environmental document?
We were involved in, when we, the initial application was under a different firm. And then they, um, after that, there was a meeting between my client and the planning department in which they decided to change the initial application to one parcel, to be cut off from the designated remainder instead of three. And at that point, the decision to restrict the driveway was done, um, on their side, and then essentially imposed by Mr. Franz when he told me how I had to modify the tentative map. And so...
So, so are you saying that you want, uh, now, they talked about two safe access points. There's only two. So you, so there's really only two options for a driveway?
That they identified. Um, my whole point is that...
I mean, from an engineering standpoint, they've identified two safe accesses.
Correct.
And so it'd be very difficult to overcome that in terms of logic, to say that you want to have access someplace else in those two places?
Essentially, yeah, but the whole, the whole point is I want to...
And so, so at any rate, are you understanding that since it's one parcel, and it would be, uh, when I'm here, it'd be unsafe to have two new entries on this road? And so they had to pick one, and they picked the safest access? Is that...
I, I am not sure about that.
Huh?
As I, as I understood it, um, it's the driveways that satisfied plate seventeen requirements of a thirty mile an hour zone, and so it imposes, um, line of sight restrictions on what you can see left and right. And if you notice, like, some of the lines there, um, particularly like on the north of the hatched green, it's a three hundred and twenty foot stretch that's straight there. So it's, it's a fairly long stretch, and my whole, my whole request was to allow it that a future analysis of the, any particular location for a driveway that might be proposed be judged on its merits for its safety at that point, rather than a carte blanche, blanket restriction on all future driveways, except for the one that they wanted.
So are you thinking in the future, if you decide to subdivide this parcel, that you might want to have another access?
Uh, currently, this wouldn't be able to be subdivided, um, because it's going to be a twenty acre...
Right.
Minimum, and it's going to be twenty-one acres. So parcel, the green hatched area, it, my more, what I'm really going for is that, I don't know, like, the topography of the site might want whoever owns it to have access somewhere else so they don't have to put a road completely over a mountain, or...
So you want two accesses, is what you're saying, or...
I just want the opportunity that whoever might buy it to have the ability to do what they want with it, as long as it's safe. And so I just wanted to say, all driveways meet plate seventeen standards, which are your county standards, so that they're all safe, but let it decide when they want it.
The county's saying that there's really only one access that's safe?
Well, a second ago, too. Safest.
Huh?
Uh, safest, I believe, is what they used.
A question, Mr. Moss?
Could, can we keep within the confines of the environmental document if we just say that, if there was two driveways shown in the questionnaire or whatever, that, that that's the limit, and the, the location needs to be approved by the county, period?
If, if...
And then if they can come up with something that they can sell you on, that you haven't thought of, so be it.
If the commission chooses to, um, allow this second driveway location to be considered, that would be acceptable with the no-access strip, um, along the entire frontage, excepting the two spots that we've previously identified. And at that point in time, they would have to discuss with the Department of Public Works about getting an encroachment permit for one of those two lots. Um, if they can convince Public Works that the other location is acceptable, then that would be fine. So if, if that's the commission's pleasure, it would meet, it would meet the environmental documents requirements. It would provide them two locations...
Using that phraseology?
It would have, it'd take a change in the condition.
I, I would, there's a couple of conditions that would need to be modified very slightly, that would identify two locations. Um, but yeah, I can, I can go over this if you'd like.
And the rest of it would still be no, no access, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And again, it would, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, can you remember what we just... Yeah, we're going to hear some wording, I think, here about, but maybe we need to take them... Let's take the first question first, and I would make a motion that we, uh, in essence, with maybe some proposed wording, uh, include the, the no-access strip with the possibility of, uh...
Two I previously identified.
Two previously identified safe access points. But, uh, it would require the, the engineering to prove, uh, prove the points before they, it could be built somewhere.
Perhaps the, the best way of approaching this is to see what, um, modifications Mr. Franz will, wishes to propose to address this issue, and then you can incorporate those changes and conditions within your motion.
Okay, so I think we would need to revise, let's begin with condition number thirty-five A. We would revise that to read, shows the two proposed new driveway encroachment locations, with an S, onto Black Hawk Lane. So he would need to revise his tentative map to show the second location that we previously identified as a possible location. Um, condition thirty-five C, right below that, uh, would show a no-access strip along the parcel one frontage with Black Hawk Lane, accepting the approved driveway locations, with an S, again, to accept both locations. Um, we would modify condition number nine, which is for the dedication of the no-access strip. Uh, again, accepting the proposed driveway locations, plural.
Do you mean a no-access strip, if you're allowing limited access to driveways?
That, that is how you limit it. That would be the limiting portion. So yeah, we'd, we'd like to include that. And then, uh, I think that's it.
Okay, should we make a motion on that, and then...
Yes, you shall.
Okay, I make a motion with wording.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. That motion carries. Now, do we have to address the, uh, is there another motion that we need to make, council?
Yeah, there is another motion we can make, if there's no more discussion.
Maybe just to back up, the motion that just happened was the motion on the conditions change.
Right, right.
Okay. Now we need to go through the motions to consider the map and the rezoning.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we adopt the mitigated negative declaration errata and mitigated monitoring plan as set forth in attachment E, and approve the minor land division PMLD two zero zero nine zero two one eight to allow for the creation of two parcels consisting of a thirty-two acre designated remainder parcel and a twenty-one acre parcel as shown on attachment C. And, uh, forward this recommendation for the approval of the Board of Supervisors of the rezone depicted in attachment D to change the property zoning from RFB X one sixty acre minimum residential forestry combining minimum building site of twenty acres to RFB X twenty acre minimum residential forestry combining minimum building site of twenty acres, subject to the following, to the findings in the CEQ findings, and, uh, the conditions in the staff report as modified by the previous, uh, motion.
Second.
Been moved in second in discussion, or... Any further discussion?
Oh, yes, there is a...
Revised map?
Revised tentative map that was submitted, and we want to make sure that that's included as part of the...
Yeah, I'm including the revised tentative map also, thank you.
Okay.
Hearing no further discussion, or I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I think we need to, the decision on the minor land division is final here. So if there's any concerns about that approval from any, the applicant or any members of the audience, they would have to appeal that decision to the Board of Supervisors, and, and then the rezoning is, goes forward on its, on its own.
And that appeal would have to be done within 10 days, and price for that appeal is about $536. Okay, I'm going to take a five minute break before the next slide.
Where are you going?
Yes.
Which is chapter two of the housing element, of the general plan. It's one of the seven mandated elements of the local general plans. Ours actually has a few more chapters besides the seven that are mandated. What we're required to do is look at existing and projected housing needs of all economic segments of our community. The state sets the schedule for the periodic update of the housing element. In this case, it's every eight years. It's unique in that matter, that also, the California Department of Housing and Community Development reviews our housing element for compliance with state law. So it's the only portion of the general plan that the state actually looks at for, to make sure we're meeting state housing law, or housing laws. So the redump process, the regional housing needs allocation, is actually what kicks off the housing element update process. It starts at the, the state level, where they project the housing needs for, for the region, for the planning period, which is 2013 through 2021. It also breaks out, takes a bigger number, and also breaks it out by economic segment. So there's four different economic, low income, very low income, moderate, and above moderate income. So the bigger number gets broken down four ways. So once we get that number, there's actually a, a two-step process. We have to ensure that the county has adequate sites to meet the number that we've been assigned, that's existing projects that are approved with affordable housing, and also vacant sites that can be built as multifamily housing. We also have to look at county efforts to promote affordable housing, what goals and policies can be put in place to help spur affordable housing construction in the county, and also preserve the affordable housing that we have. So the document that is before you is actually a two-parter. The background report looks at our existing housing needs by different economic categories, and also special needs housing. It looks at the inventory of land available for multifamily construction. It looks at what constraints we have in housing, could be infrastructure, or even fees could be a constraint to construction. It also has to look at, evaluate our old housing element, to see what has been successful, what have we completed, and what can be modified. And the policy document is the shorter of the two documents, that will actually become chapter two. It has the specific goals, policies, and programs that will be part of the general plan once adopted. The regional housing need, the number assigned to Placer, unincorporated placer was a little over 5,000. Of that 5,000, 3,200 is supposed to be affordable, it's broken out by 2,322, very low to low, and 936, moderate. So we had to look at our residential holding capacity, and here you can see, we have more than enough acreage or approved projects to meet our housing need, almost three times as much. A lot of that is in approved specific plans, this number here, and also non-residential designation land, commercial properties that are vacant, that can be built at 20 units or more per acre.
I have a question for a little bit. The signed number from state, do you have any ability to answer that? Do you think it's sort of...
It's given to SECOG, and then SECOG has a formula that distributes it to all jurisdictions in the region. There's a process where you can fight that distribution. Others have tried, well, seldom successful. You're basically stuck with the number they give you.
Thank you. I thought so.
So our housing element update started last summer, almost a year ago. We had some community outreach in October with a workshop with mostly nonprofits and community members. The background report, the draft documents were released in January. We were here in February for your review with the workshop, and then went to the board to bless it, and it allowed us to submit to the state for review. So the state review started in April. We submitted the documents. It was a very informal process this time, it was relatively quick and painless. Emails and phone calls only. We did receive an approval letter, basically saying, and it's attached to your staff report, that the document looks good, it complies with our minimum requirements, and if you adopt this as written, you're good to go with the state. So we released our public review draft August 1st, and will be going to the board pending an outcome here today sometime this fall. Once the board adopts it, we then submit it to HCD, ideally before October 31st is the deadline, and they'll have 90 days to do their final review and certification. So there were a few changes that we made based on HCD comments, and also, Placer County Transportation Planning Agency also had a few comments. So these were made, changes to the document that you last saw in February. HCD wanted a little bit more description about the Placer County communities, so there's several pages about Granite Bay, Forest Hill, Sheridan, et cetera. Minor changes to the site inventory to deal with the airport overflight zones, there were a couple parcels that were in the overflight zones that we didn't catch, so we had to remove those. We added three new policy, or one new policy and two programs. Policy A8 references the overflight zones and being in compliance with Placer County Airport Land Use Plan. So that was an ask by the PCTPA, and we've agreed to do that. The state hasn't seen it yet, but they've been notified that this change is coming, and it's relatively minor. Just says if any multifamily dwellings are proposed in the overflight zone, they have to comply with their land use tables. So there's certain restrictions they require, and we said yes, that's our routine practice. The state asked that we add program F7, coordinating with the Alta Center to meet needs of residents with development, developmental disabilities, and that was a no-brainer. Also add a program F8 to address deficiencies in county regulations regarding transitional and supportive housing. This was a little bit of a surprise to us, our zoning text amendment we did a couple years ago. The state says this doesn't quite meet what they require, so we'll be coming back to you probably sometime this fall with a change zoning text amendment to supportive and transitional housing requirements. So you'll be seeing that relatively soon. And with that, we asked, we recommend that you find the negative, negative declaration prepared for the housing element is adequate, and make the findings found in the staff report in accordance with CEQA, and forward a recommendation to the board that they adopt the Placer County Housing Element, which will update our general plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Boy, I've got, on...
All right.
On page 66 of the report, which is on 22 of our, what we have, on F5, which is kind of projecting that these are things that are going to be done in the future, will that, will F5 come back before us, as that kind of works its way through the process?
Yes, a lot of these programs will require zoning text amendments.
Right.
So they would go to the MACs and also come back to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. So it's a future work effort. And this, the residential care home occupancy increase is going to be a toughie. I know it's, it'd probably be very controversial.
Yeah.
So that one is going to be a big undertaking.
Any other questions?
I have a quick one.
Just ever...
How does this dovetail in with the TRPA community plans that are coming up?
It's a good question. TRPA is our...
Is this coinciding, or is this an addition to, or?
They kind of overlap, but if, this effort recognizes that there's restrictions in the basin, like density and that type of thing, and small lots. So some of the things that we can do down here, we can't do up there. So there is the discussion of constraints to affordable housing in, in the basin. So there are a few things that the new community plan efforts are going to help us with, with affordable housing, like SROs, same room occupancy units. Currently, it doesn't recognize those, and the new plans will have that allowed use in some zone districts.
I just was pleased to see the picture of Tahoe on the top.
Just note that the inventory is taken into consideration.
There are some sites up in the basin that are counted in our inventory as being appropriate for affordable housing. And those, that site inventory, when we do that, it's, it's not the county promising that we're going to do affordable housing on the sites. These are just recognizing, these are appropriately zoned and have adequate infrastructure to do affordable housing if someone chooses to do so. So we just to show we have the land and the capacity to do it.
Okay. Now, let me ask, now, you sort of normally assume that these are sites that are sitting empty or available for, to do these things. Now, there's probably some sites, and the one that comes to my mind is the trailer park in Tahoe Vista that would be suited for affordable housing, but it's, it already is providing affordable housing in a sense, but we don't have redevelopment anymore, so is there any incentives to get there from here?
Yeah, I mean, the, the incentives identified through this, the programs do apply to Tahoe...
Could you tell us her name and kind of give the public staff the...
My name, I'm Crystal Jacobson, Placer County Planning, sorry. So I'm, I'm actually taking the lead on the Tahoe community plan update process, so very much familiar with how that work program kind of relates to the housing element. So the housing element definitely applies to the basin, and it takes into consideration the units that are in Tahoe and the availability, the capacity, the zoning capacity for affordable housing. So that's all included in our inventory. But in addition to that, with TRPA, there were some policies that were developed and approved through the regional plan process that are specific to providing for affordable housing in the basin. So they actually have programs that they'd like to see implemented in the basin to accommodate affordable housing. So it's kind of in line with the regional plan, and so all of that will be kind of folded into the community plan as we move forward. So those, those sites are identified in the housing element, and those districts will be identified in the community plan update.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, because I didn't want to see us go one through, through one process and have another one down the road that didn't, that didn't go together, and that sounds good.
Right.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Okay, in that case, we'll open this discussion to the public. If anyone wishing to speak, come forward. And seeing no one, I'll close the public session and bring it back to the board. Gentlemen, what we're looking forward is a motion?
I'll make the motion that's right up to the recommendation, finding that the negative declaration fair to the housing element is, is adequate, making the findings, and forward the recommendations to Board of Supervisors, Placer County Housing Element, and the rest of that.
Seconded. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. All right. Are you ready? All right, now we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, an appeal for the chief building official on a cost recovery decision. If we could hear from staff, or representative of, because that doesn't look like Tim.
Good morning, Chairman. Kathy Wistad with Placer County Code Enforcement, and I'm, am staff for this matter. The property in question is located Highway 49, Holly Vista Way, if you're... If you're familiar with 49 corridor, it's actually the third parcel in, just behind some commercial zoning, there is some additional residential zoning there. This site is parcel numbered as 038112023000, and addressed as 12040 Holly Vista Drive. Excuse me, there's a second address for a detached garage and storage structure that is addressed as 12030 Holly Vista Drive. At the, the opponent is Tanya Beenick, who was the owner at the time, that the fees were incurred, but no longer is. We have a new owner. She's contesting the cost of code enforcement services that were in the amount of $3,430.35. The, that's based on several months, and actually just over a year of history. This is new for us. I don't think we've ever been before the Planning Commission with regard to cost recovery, so I'm going to do my best to give you enough details to make a decision, but not bore you to death with which, with each event and inspection and things that took place. So, generally, as code enforcement, we're directed to work cooperatively with a property owner. And we seek resolution that way through negotiated timelines, communications, phone calls, et cetera. Need to satisfy the complaint, but need to also understand the owner's position, financial ability, et cetera. In this case, Ms., Mrs., Beenick, Tanya Beenick began ownership on March 29, 2011. Now, we did have a previous owner, and this property was in violation when she purchased the property. Previous owner was Henry Jones. I had worked with Henry Jones, and he had worked well with the county with regard to resolution. Mr. Jones actually did have the unit rented when the complaint came in in 2006. He chose to vacate that unit, and then he exercised, he had contractors come in and people come in to try to figure out what he could do. Mr. Jones was, chose to sell the property as opposed to obtain a permit, but due to the fact that he kept it vacant for almost four years, no hard enforcement, no citation enforcement ensued. And we just simply tracked it and let him keep it vacant for the extended period of time while he was exercising his options. On September 28, 2010, I noticed Caldwell Banker signage, and I had spoke with Mr. Jones on the phone, and we did not record a notice of violation which would prohibit or a title search would pick up with regard to the violations. That's not a standard practice. So, on September 28th, I noticed that it was for sale, and looked at the MLS listing, and the copy is in your packet for reference, and confirmed that it did disclose that that upstairs area above the garage did not have a permit, that the county was aware of that. And I was comfortable with that disclosure, and so simply set the matter aside to confirm that it was vacant, perhaps recheck ownership. On March 31, 2011, electrical contractor came to our front counter in an attempt to obtain a permit. They called code enforcement as there's flags on the property with regard to the violation, and I denied the permit. It's like, no, we have violations there. Unless the permit goes to correct the violations, we're not going to just allow it to be issued. So, the contractor was sent away. The contractor came back.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
It was built without a permit?
No, the garage structure was built in 1985 as garage storage, second-story storage. Mr. Jones, by his admission, and I'm sure historically, converted it to an apartment, a one-bedroom apartment without benefit of permit sometime after 1985.
Okay, and so, just given what you just said, you know, the person that bought this property was notified that the structure didn't have a permit. It was a violation?
To the correct of my knowledge, per the...
So, if a contractor came in to get a permit, was there some problem other than the fact it just didn't have a permit originally? That he was refused?
Yeah, there's a land use issue with regard to the secondary dwelling, because it is zoned office professional, and secondary dwellings are not a matter of entitlement in the office professional.
Okay, so that was my question, going to be my question. I guess there's no way that they could have really...
Not for that use. They could certainly obtain a permit to convert it back to storage or for a lawful office.
But not for residents?
Not for a secondary dwelling.
Okay, thank you. That answers my big question. Appreciate it.
So, then, when, like I said, when they came in for the electrical permit that was denied, I presume that the electrical contractor went back, perhaps spoke with the property owner, came back a short time later, again, said no, I went out to the counter and spoke with him, and then followed him to the subject property, where I actually met with Tanya Beenick for the first time. I understand that it was, this is two days after the recordation. It was my first contact with her. I spent over an hour with her, basically in the hood of the car, going over the violation, the violation file, where her options were the office professional zone district and those allowed uses, and gave her some guidance with regard to corrective action, and advised I would afford her, just as we did with Mr. Jones, an opportunity to bring the property into compliance. That was on March 31st. And I got, I will say that the residence itself had a simple violation. The residence is legal non-conforming for occupancy. The unpermitted apartment is not. So, they, somebody bootlegged in a closet with, at the primary dwelling, kind of a minor issue, but it does require a permit, and I believe that that closet was encroaching. So, Tanya did come in, in a cooperative manner, on April 5th, and obtained a permit for that. And I thought that was outstanding. We got a partial correction. I know that she had started research with regard to what she could do with the unpermitted storage building. On April 12th, I was gone to lunch, and electric permit did get issued by counterstaff and for this subject property. And I was advised at that time that Ms. Beenick had been in four or five times trying to get permits. Unfortunately, they were not permits that would correct the violation, so they were stalled. I'm not sure why that permit got issued, but it got issued. On May 7th, I confirmed that Ms. Beenick had removed a balcony and a laundry room without benefit of permit. June 28, 2011, there were stairs going up to the second unit, to that unpermitted dwelling. Had the look, taste, and feel, you know, that things were happening in spite of the fact that there was no permit for that. On November 16th, was the pivotal point for me when I went to the property, and that upstairs unit had been rented. And I met with Dennis, I believe his name is, the occupant at the time, very nice young man, and he had stated that he rented it about four months ago, which would put him in there July, August timeframe, or excuse me, maybe August, September timeframe, that he was aware of the violations, that he wasn't surprised that the county was there, allowed me to come in, take pictures. His brother was living in the main house, and it was an ideal situation for him. He had a young daughters with joint custody. The location was ideal, family was close by and everything. Through no fault of his, there, you know, he was obviously in violation with regard to occupancy, but I felt that Ms. Beenick was the responsible party as the owner, and the one that had received the notices with regard to the permit need for this, and she chose to rent it anyway. So, on that date, that's the actual citation date that led us to the point where we get, the cost recovery kicks in. So, you know, if we're sending letters or emails or even notices out to you, we're still working with you in what we call voluntary compliance. We're nudging you a little bit, but it's still voluntary. Once the citation is the cutoff, that's where we determine that, okay, it's, we're non-compliant, we're taking this matter to court for some reason. And like I said, when she chose to rent it, that, when I found out that she chose to rent it, even though I hadn't been there for a couple months, that was a pivotal point for me, and I believe at that time that she created the violation by her choice to rent it. Subsequent information does show, she did finally acknowledge in one of the emails, which is also in your packet, that she acknowledged renting that. I believe her confirmation states that she rented in September of 2011, knowing that the property was in violation. So, the citation was processed, routine process. We went to trial, took it to trial. She pled not guilty, we went to trial. Trial was held on April 20th, 2012. Ms. Beenick was found guilty on two counts. There were three counts levied against her, and I believe that you have a copy of the minute order in your packet as well. If not, I have one, but she was found guilty on the building code section of a structure without a permit and occupancy violation. Now, the judge chose to dismiss the third count, which was the unlawful land use, saying you can't have a secondary dwelling here. That was redundant, because the permit is going to correct that. We know that permits are expensive, and it's not uncommon for our judge to dismiss fines. And in this case, he did. The money's probably better spent on correction. And so, no fines were imposed with Ms. Beenick at this time, but the conviction still stands. Excuse me. Now, getting a little bit more into the, that's what got us to the need for cost recovery. So, with regard to the cost recovery, we are entitled to administrative costs that include county staff time as reasonably related and necessary to the investigation. Site inspections, monitoring, reports, telephone conversations, correspondence, meetings, hearings, court, what have you, that's all administrative cost. For code enforcement, what historically we've done is we only charge for code enforcement staff time, though we do have the authority. I could reach out there and grab Michael Johnson's time, as he had time on this, or Mr. Wagner's time, or other county staff time. We historically do not and have not done that, did not do that in this case. It was simply for code enforcement action. There were a lot of other staff members involved with this, not only through Ms. Beenick's attempt to obtain information, research, maps. She met with planning and building. I believe that she was into the county 17 times. That's an extensive number of times. I can appreciate that. She wasn't charged for any of those times. She was only charged for either the times that I met with her, that I had action with regard to the file. So, with regard to, there's some discrepancy with regard to the code sections that are used for cost recovery. There's two sections that apply, 1762-090, 1762-100. The 100 section does give us the authority for additional costs, whether or not a permit is issued, we can pursue that and do pursue that. Had Ms. Beenick chose to come into the county and obtain a permit, the cost, there would be what's called a double fee or kind of a punitive cost for that. Actually, I misspoke. There would not, because she, at that time, she had not created the violation. That did not happen until she leased the property to the occupant. So, I apologize for that error. On July 11, 2012, we received an appeal request from Ms. Beenick with regard to the fees, the letter that she received, and indicating, she was disputing any and all administrative costs that you were requesting, and she looked forward to meeting with Tim Wagner. Again, standard protocol, as chief building official is the hearing personnel for these, he's our supervisor, so he sits in and listens to these appeals. That process is not an uncommon process. Having it at this level is the one that we have never done before. So, on August 9, 2012, Ms. Beenick came into the county and met with chief building official, Timothy Wagner. During the hearing, at that hearing, she conveyed five primary concerns with regard to the cost recovery. That the property owner was not aware of the violations, and as previously stated, I disagree with that, because I did speak with the real estate agent, I did confirm the MLS listing, but nonetheless, that was her contention. The property owner inherited the problem in that she did not create the violation. Again, it's my belief, staff feels that the knowingly leasing that unpermitted portion of the building created the issue that led to the citation action, and that the property owner, Ms. Beenick, felt that she moved promptly to resolve the violations upon notification. I disagree with that. Again, I'm not to bore you with the details on, you know, times and all, I know you've got some emails that show a pattern of coming in, and, you know, you talk to seven different people, depending on how you pose that question, you may get seven different answers. There's no question, based on the notice of violation that I issued on March 31st, as soon as I was aware that Ms. Beenick was the property owner, that she was aware of the violation and need for a permit, and chose to ignore that requirement. And again, Ms., item number four, I'm on page three, if you care to follow along, is the, that no zoning enforcement was necessary due to her cooperation. You know, again, facts are stated that, I'm not sure zoning enforcement were, what that meant, but that was one of the contentions, and that we failed to send the summary of costs in a legible fashion via certified mail to the property owner. There's, the truth in that statement is, yes, a mistake was made, and it was not sent certified mail. And the reason that we use certified mail is to ensure that the property owner gets the document. Well, we know Ms. Beenick received the document, so that was kind of a simple staff error, no harm, no foul. The document was received and subsequently appealed, so, you know, I must admit, that is a true statement. There was an error with regard to the notification. With regard to the legible document, we have, you know, you'll see these red files that we carry around. We maintain activity logs. We're responsible for phone calls, for contacts, for letters, whatever, and it's, everything's contained within that red file. Each day that I do something, whatever that action may be, gets noted on the activity log, whether it's phone call, Board of Supervisors check, whatever, research, site visit, all of it is duly noted. Historically, when people have asked for, hey, why am I getting charged this? We provide that activity log. You can see exactly why you're getting charged this, what the activity was. Was it a telephone call? Was it a notice of violation? Was it a letter, meeting, whatever it was? You can, you can see it, and the time is off to the side. And generally charted, we try, we're not perfect, we try to chart it at the time, but occasionally, we do have to go back and, you know, fill it in or estimate a time. So, with regard to legibility, it is a handwritten document. I have had attorneys and laypeople alike, we also provide these as public records requests. It's not uncommon for people to call and say, you know, I'm looking at this activity log, what does TC mean? What does RP mean? And we'll walk them through that activity log to help them understand. And to date, has been an acceptable document. In this case, the council directed, because we were coming to the commission for the first time, we created a second document, a format A, which is also in your pocket, excuse me, that basically line items that that time spent, that time directly correlates to the activity log. It's just, we were attempting to make it easier for the commission to understand that document was provided to Ms. Beenick as well. At the conclusion of the hearing, after the issues were addressed, Tim Wagner, chief building official, affirmed the fees and decided that the amount was due and payable. Then, the property owner chose to appeal that chief building official's decision to the county CEDR, Agency Director. The Agency Director conducted his review and also affirmed those. I believe that that is also in your packet, affirmed that the costs were due and payable, advising that this process, this appeal process, was the next process for Ms. Beenick to take. Obviously, I'm standing before you today with regard to the cost recovery as a result of that appeal. So, it's important to note that the existence, the scope, and the validity of the underlying code violations, permit requirement, second issue, whatever, that's not what is before us. that's not what is before us today. The matter was adjudicated in the Placer County Court. She was found guilty of those charges. That's not what's being appealed by the property owner. The court has, decision is considered final. That decision was not appealed. The planning commission is to consider solely the costs imposed on the property owner. And considering that the commission, we ask that, shall consider whether total costs are reasonable in the circumstances of the case and the factors to be considered are, include but are not limited to whether the present owner created the violation and/or has the ability to correct the violation. It's staff's belief that both of those are accurate. They have, those standards have been met. And whether the property owner moved promptly to correct the violation or cooperated in the abatement of the nuisance, the nuisance being the unpermitted apartment. Originally, as I stated, we did have some good effort at cooperative compliance that was lost when that unpermitted structure was knowingly rented. The property, the grounds for the appeal are that the fees are not valid because the property owner fits criteria outlined in 1762-090. I don't think it's necessary for me at this time to get into the validity of the, those two sections, the cost recovery sections. The sections are in our zoning ordinance. They've been approved by the board. They're the standard sections that we use. That's not the matter before us today. It's, go ahead.
You see, earlier you said that they are in conflict or they aren't? Is there a conflict there between the two sections or not?
For, well, there's, they're generally used differently. If you, if Ms. Bienic had got a permit, let's say she created the violation, she got a permit, then there's that double fee portion that we could charge, that 1762-100. That would be the applicable section. So that would compensate, that would be the punitive damages, the 1762.
So just a minute, if she would have gotten a permit to do something with this structure in conformance with the zoning, then that section would still require that she pay the penalty fees?
If she created the violation. And in this case, she didn't, the creation didn't happen until the occupancy started. Henry Jones built the structure. Henry Jones created.
So that's saying if she would have conform, conformed to the zoning and got the permit?
Yeah, she would have to choose a use that would be allowed in the office professional zone district. And those, we had gone over those uses several times.
So anyway, if she would have conformed to zoning with the permit, that she still would be subject to the fees because of the court's finding?
No, because she hadn't been cited at that time.
No, if she was cited, she went to court. And after the court, she moved a person out of the structure. She came to the office and said, okay, I'm going to bring this building into conformance with the zoning. And she does that. When she gets the permit, the permit fees would be the normal permit fees. Plus, since she had previously violated, she would have to pay the double fees, I guess, double fee. Or she'd have to pay for the administrative costs too.
I, you know, I've never come across that, but I would say, no, she would not be.
I'm just trying to clarify that first section, what I heard you say, what it really says.
Okay, the 1762-090?
Yeah.
The cost recovery? So if she, we do that upon citation. So are you saying she wouldn't have gotten cited if she obtained a permit? So I guess I don't understand your question.
No, no, she was cited and she was ordered to correct the problem. So she comes in and corrects the problem with, in conformance with the zoning and gets, I mean, by getting a permit in conformance with the zoning. What's that section saying?
I'm not sure that I, that I understand if, the way that I understand what you're asking, that if she comes in after the court finding, so she's already been cited. So we've already entered into the cost recovery portion. And she came in to get a permit for an allowed use. We would probably at that time waive those fees. I don't know. I haven't come across that. Haven't, when you, we cite somebody for non-compliance. I have, to date, that I can recall, not have somebody come in and get it. That would have to be a manager's decision.
But that's not what happened?
That's not what happened.
Yeah, well, I guess, well, what is this section really talking about? That's maybe what my question is.
Maybe I could clarify. The 1762-090 addresses recovery of the administrative enforcement costs if a permit isn't required to cure the violation or a permit is not obtained and we go through court and end up with a violation. The other section states that if you erect, erect, basically do a land use without getting the permit and you cure it with the permit, you're still going to pay the permit fees. You'll also be subject to the enforcement fees. So it's a little convoluted, I will admit, on these code provisions. But I think where the appeal, and we'll be hearing from the appellant, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I think her position is that this entire recovery section, if I'm reading her appeal correctly, doesn't apply, period. And I don't think that's how you would read it. It does apply. It outlines how you would recover the costs, either in the case where sometimes we have land use violations that don't require a permit to cure it. For example, excess storage is pretty, pretty much a classic example. You have excess storage, the way to cure it is to basically take the excess storage off the property. You're not getting a permit to do that in most cases, but we still have the authority under this code provision to seek the, and be, recompense the cost of the enforcement actions that led to the final curing of the violation. I don't know if that helps you at all. It's, and again, I don't want to put words in the appellant's mouth, so.
So I guess, I guess so far what we're hearing is that second provision doesn't apply in this case?
It does not apply in this case because she never applied for a permit. And we went through the, they, they went, staff went through the code enforcement through the court and she was found guilty.
Okay, and so I guess that answers, that answers the question for me. I just, we don't really need to know all the details of the two sections, other than that second one doesn't apply. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Chairman, has a question, Jeffrey.
When we, when we, when you contact somebody regarding a potential violation and it does not, it's corrected or resolved without a citation, is there still an attempt to cover, recover any of your costs or time?
No, the citation is the trigger that, where we go, we do cost recovery.
After, from the citation forward?
Well, the citation is, if we get to that point, then we're going to seek cost recovery for resolving the case, for the time spent resolving the case. If they correct it voluntarily, because citation is basically forced in their hand into non-voluntary compliance. And when it's affirmed by the court with guilty findings, you know, that's just icing on the cake, so to speak, with regard to, hey, you're guilty of these things. The time spent to correct this, we had to get to this point for a reason. Many, most of our violations are corrected without citation and subsequent cost recovery measures are not implemented. I would say more than half.
Thank you.
Kathy, you said that you made contact with her at her property before, obviously, there was any violation. I mean, that you had written a citation to her and you informed her that the property, at least the garage part, was not something that could be rented or utilized as a living space. In your mind, that was very clear to her at that point. You said you spent about an hour with her out in the, I guess, out by the structure and made that clear, right?
Yes, absolutely. And it was followed up with a notice of violation for that inspection. I don't know if you do or don't have a copy of that, but specifically.
That was prior, that was prior to her having anybody in, living in that space, correct?
That unit was, Mr. Jones had kept that unit vacant. It was vacant when Ms. Bienic purchased the property until such time that she rented it to Dennis.
But when you met her, she owned the property, that she had taken possession of that property?
That's correct.
Right, and so there, in your mind, there was, she should have been very clear that that unit could never be used as a living area.
Absolutely no question whatsoever. Yeah, and I did even give her the office professional code sections, choose a use. This is what it's zoned. We had gone through this with Mr. Jones, Michael Wells and planning staff. It's noted in the computer, there's a flag on the property indicating that a secondary dwelling is not allowed. There's no question. And followed up with a written document, that notice of violation, that the, that it needed a permit, could not be used for a secondary dwelling.
But she, again, on her own, decided to ignore that and rented it out?
That's correct.
Now, could I ask a question?
You may.
Assuming that he knew, is it Mr. Jones knew that he was illegal? He had plumbing and livable unit up there. But he had, did he had, he should have come in and gotten a demolition permit then, I guess hypothetically, to remove those things, but that didn't get?
No, and that was an option, but when we've got improvements, you know, obviously improvements cost, there's value to those improvements. I'm sure that this is being assessed tax-wise as a secondary dwelling. So the, to make them tear those improvements out, not knowing what a buyer or a future owner may want, seems a little bit premature. So it's not an uncommon practice if the unit is vacant. I mean, I talked with people that, I talked to a guy that wanted a dental lab up there. You know, so he would have wanted that sink to remain. He would have, of course, had to get the after the fact permit. But I talked to a variety of people with regard to allowable uses there.
Okay, thank you.
So in other words, if with all the improvements that were in there, if somebody came in and got a permit and said, okay, I'm going to put my office up there and it's just going to be the bathroom for the office or whatever, it wouldn't be a violation. It's just if somebody's sleeping overnight there, living there, that's the violation?
That's correct, yeah. And it's kind of a, it's a secondary dwelling because it had a full kitchen and intended for living space. The bedroom, the closet in the bedroom. Those are features that we look for with regard to residential occupancy.
So that, that stuff would have to come out if it was converted into the office use other than the bathrooms?
That's correct. The zoning ordinance does have a definition of kitchen with regard to appliances, cabinets that are designed to accommodate those, et cetera, and they would have to be removed.
And it seems like a lot of offices have kind of a meeting room with some of those appliances in it?
Well, like a little microwave or something like that. This was a full-size refrigerator, a full-size stove. It was a kitchen.
Regardless, it doesn't have anything much to do with what's designed there. The usage of it, it seems to be the violation?
That's correct.
Now, the, one other quick one. The bill that you sent them, that is $3,400, it does not include any of the procedures that you're going through now. What happens to those costs?
They get absorbed. And it also does not include the time that I worked with Mr. Jones. We started solely from the time that Ms. Bienic was the property owner.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I don't know if I heard, so the actual, the final bill, depending on what the outcome of this meeting is today, is still the same as what's recorded at 34?
It would actually be more, or there would be, there, it's going to be, that's what's due and payable. We're not going to add a second bill for the prep time that it took for today's hearing or staff time spent at today's hearing. There would not be a supplemental bill sent. Though it's appropriate, the time has been spent, but no, there will not be a supplemental bill sent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I think you guys have the gist of it. So in conclusion, let me say that the, that the county has spent significant resources in the efforts to resolve the violations on the property, including the superior court proceedings. We recognize that the appellant did not construct the rental space. The appellant leased the space after having noticed of those violations. And that she did not vacate that space until, the court actually suggested that she do so. I do have a follow-up communication from Ms. Bienic that she gave the tenant 30-day notice that she sold the property to Mr. Shields. The new owner took possession of the property on May 4th, 2012. And that tenant, that same tenant was still in there. So whether, I don't know what happened with the notice to vacate.
You said she doesn't own the property anymore?
She does not own the property anymore. Yeah, Mr. Don and Jean Shields own the property. And I'm, again, monitoring the property, met with Mr. Shields. It was in November. Didn't, I didn't kick the guy out before Christmas. They asked if we could wait till after the holidays. So we did.
He's not at violation, no?
No, it's vacant and I'm still monitoring it. Mr. Shields has actually owns Speedy Lube right there. And he owns another residential property. And he's met with planning staff with regard to incorporating this, perhaps doing a rezoning. He could have a caretaker, somebody that worked for his business. You can have a caretaker quarters there, that would be allowed. So he has a little bit different options with that adjacent business.
If there's no more questions?
Well, I just have a question now. It said that the, historically, it's not residentially zoned, but historically, it's been used as that one residence and a garage. And that zoning, is a second unit permitted at all, even with permits?
In current zoning, no. Had that secondary dwelling, if Mr. Jones had chose to permit the secondary dwelling in 1985 when it was built, it would have been allowed. I think at that time, a use permit, a discretionary permit was.
But now, but now you, that zoning doesn't allow?
It does not.
I guess the residence on there is grandfathered in.
Correct, this residence itself, exactly.
So it's not, it's in a non-conforming use, so you, by right, you can't have a second unit on there like you can residential property?
Exactly.
By right, if you, if you have whatever, you know, you can get all the utilities in the parking, et cetera?
That's exactly correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly correct.
Mr. Chairman, a little question for us. How did this wind up with two addresses? I mean, typically, the county doesn't issue a second address to a garage?
It's actually more common than you would think for a property to be duly zoned, duly addressed. And I talked with engineering and surveying, addressing about that. And Mr. Jones requested an address when the garage structure was built and they gave him one.
Thank you. Okay, so any other further questions for staff? In that case, thank you very much.
Okay.
And we'll hear, Ms. Bienic, I suspect? Bienic.
My name is Tanya Bienic. I'm the previous owner of 12030-12040.
Could you be in the microphone a little bit more, a minute, your way?
Sure, sure.
You can bend it down so it's closer.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Again, my name is Tanya Bienic, previous owner of 12030-12040, Holly Vista Way. At first, I'd like to actually discuss something that they submitted to you just last week. And Kathy did say that they created this document just last week to provide to you. And that document is attachment D. Someone gave the order to create a new document titled code enforcement fee breakdown and submitted it for the code enforcement, instead of the code enforcement event log, which was provided to me. The planning department didn't make anyone aware that attachment D was recently created, was a recently created document? No. Did the planning department document that they had replaced the code enforcement event log with attachment D? No. Did the planning department provide a copy of the code enforcement event log? No. Are both items identical in nature? No. And was the attachment D ever provided to me before it was submitted last week? And the answer would be no. Therefore, I sent an email out. that, my opinion, that Attachment D that they had provided you is a falsified document. And I was requesting Attachment D to be dismissed as evidence at this time. And the reason being is that they just created it last week to verify their stance. And it was never provided to me. I have also asked who gave the order to create Attachment D. And I also asked who created Attachment D from the Office of Agency Director, Michael Johnson. And they refused to reply to me on those answers. Therefore, I'd like Attachment D to be dismissed as evidence. With that being said, I've read over from George Vasosco Supervisor Planner, the document on August 22nd. I will show that without a doubt that I wouldn't be standing here before you if the planning department had provided me with what any honorable and productive tax-paying citizen of this community deserves. And that being, my questions answered. Requested information provided in a timely manner and the guarantee of counsel by the planning department, all of which were denied to me. Because of this, we are here today, not in any actions by myself. We are here because of the lack of action by the planning department. And two items that Kathy brought up, that was their decision on these costs. One was I was due diligent in action. The second would be that I was aware of the violation before I purchased the property. And she referenced the MLS document. Let's see, that she had provided, which would be Attachment E. As everyone's aware of, MLS, you don't have access to MLS unless you're a real estate agent and have a real estate agent's license. Therefore, me being aware that a property, in her opinion, was rezoned or not permitted would be a zero percent chance. With that being said, if you look at Attachment E, Attachment E is dated 9/29/2010. It was the year before I bought the property. MLS documentation changes every day. This property was in and out, different real estate agents. And on that tone, even if they did print out a copy, the comments would not be provided. So therefore, I was not aware of any violations with the property when I purchased it. In fact, if you look at attachments, well, let's go back, when I purchased the property. I did send someone down to get a permit. I always do, follow-along procedure, to get a permit that I wanted to do something on the property. Kathy did come back and talk to me, I'd say for about five or 10 minutes. I disagreed with her. I says, "Well, let me go ahead and get some information on what you have to say." With that being said, I was due diligent with my actions. First off, I contacted the planning department and spoke with Nicole in April. I referenced the call in an email dated October 26, 2011. She concluded via phone that both properties were legal with the zoning residential slash duplex. I contacted my title company and had them perform a second title search, April 21, 2011. They detected that both properties were legal and zoning of residential duplex. That's attachments A1, B plus B1. I contacted County Tax Records Office, which has provided the information from the planning department. And I had them research the property and provide current property tax records. May 2011, they concluded that both properties were legal. A follow-up was performed on 12/29/2012, which showed the same conclusion. That's Attachment D.
Are these in our...
They're in order, yes. Attachments, one A is my plaster county title, which I was, I did a title research when I purchased the property. And they provided me a title report, and it's attachments one A. Plaster Title Company states that here in this area property is a duplex, two single-family residences, and the property address 12040. B...
You know, I'm looking, but I don't see it.
I don't have it, when I don't think.
Maybe if you look under the pink sheet, I think that's probably where it's being referenced.
Attachments one A, start over. Title Company states that here in this area property is a duplex, two single-family homes. And address 12040 Holly Vista Way. I then had plaster do a second title search. They came up with the same thing. B1, residential duplex, two single-family residences. I contacted my broker. He provided the letter C, saying that he did a research as well. It was with title and described, the legal description and property description duplex slash two single-family homes, 12040, excuse me, 12030-12040 Holly Vista Way. D, I followed up with the county records, again, supplied the information from the planning department. Two single-family residences, two. The only map that I received was from Kathy Winstead, and that is E, Attachment one E. My property is number 23, with the address 12030 and address 12040. And E1 is her signature that she gave it to me on 4-21-11. The only map I've ever received, and I had to hire a company, mapping company, to provide it, is F, which states that the property zoning is RP-DC, residential professional, not OP. G, and she's right, I've been to the planning department and building department probably over 17 times. The reason being, all this conflicting information. So what I said was, "Provide me that information." On June 6, 2011, page eight, Attachment H. Planning Department, Notice of Information Request. I'm requesting a copy of all resolutions by the Planning Commission on my property, 12030 and 12040 Holly Vista Way. Is anything, anything other than a duplex slash two single-family from 1995 to present? Provide copies of all maps, zoning, parcels, et cetera. Please have all documentations no later than 6/13/2011." Gave him my information. Now, I kept this property vacant on the suspicion that maybe Kathy, I have no idea, but so far, all my information states, "I bought a duplex, two single-family homes." I heard from the previous owner, who lived there for 25 years in that unit, in that unit, that she's talking about, for 25 years. He says, "Yes, everything's good." Okay. Did planning get back to me on that information? In a reasonable time, at the request date? No, they did not. In fact, let's see here. June, number nine. And I'm referencing Attachment three because I actually gave a summary of everything I'm gonna say. So, and this is number nine. So, I purchased the property, kept it vacant. All this information says, "Yes, I do have a duplex. I do have two single-family homes since 1985." No information was provided when I sent out the document on time. No information was provided in June. Number 10, no information was provided in July. No information was provided in August. No wonder I was there at the planning department 17 times. Disagreements pertaining to building code arise at this time between zoning and building department. I'm ready to go. What kind of permits do I get if needed? I need to know that they are needed in one. And then, I need to know why all this zoning conflict is happening. Because if I could get a residential permit, first of all, I don't know if I needed one or not. I felt that I had a duplex residential. But just in case, I need to know which way to go. Because for any developer would not pull a permit, knowing they're gonna spend thousands of dollars. And in this case, since the conflicts, and I will tell you about the conflicts between zoning and the building department, but they would not pull any permit at that point in time, if it was needed, and spend thousands of dollars on false information when things are conflicting and confused. With that being said, we're to August now. Place is still vacant. And according to Kathy, it was still vacant in August.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When you purchased this property, by law, you should have gotten a disclosure statement?
Yes.
That would have said in there, if everything had been permitted, regarding the structure?
Yes, sir.
I don't see that in here. So I can't tell you whether, you should have read that and obviously understood that. And if Mr. Jones said that everything was permitted on that property, which he apparently told you that it was, then your action should have been against him. You should have gone after him when you were informed by the county that that was a structure that was in violation.
I had to find out from the county if that was true. And so far, I had not had any information from the county.
You didn't read your disclosure document? Did you, and did it say in there that everything was permitted?
I believe it was duplex residential. And I'm not sure.
No, that everything that was done regards to the property was permitted?
And I'm not sure. I'd have to look that up.
If it was, you should know that. Because if it did state that it was not permitted, then you knew that there were issues with the property. If it did state that everything was permitted, you should have taken legal action, not against the county, but against Mr. Jones.
Okay, I did not see that in that.
That's a big deficiency on your part.
Okay, I absolutely agree. But in this timeframe, I was due diligent, and I'm trying to get to that. Number 14, no information was provided in September. After I had not received any information, and due to the financial burden, I had to conclude that I still had a residence and it was duplex. So yes, I did rent that out, and I believe it was actually closer to October. An incomplete packet of information was delivered dated October 26, which I picked up November 4. So it was over 150 days late from the request. I believe if I would have got that information, I wouldn't be standing here, and that's one reason. I requested time to review the packet and promised to take action pending my review, which included giving the tenant a 30-day notice. Kathy filed violation in court within a couple weeks, November 20. After multiple verbal and email requests to meet with Mr. Vascosco, because I was still in the process of meeting, doing my due diligence and meeting with the planning department, but they were refusing to meet with me. So he finally agreed on January 13 to meet with me. And this was after she already filed the violation. And he finally decided to meet with me.
A question here. You said in November, you finally got some information from the planning department?
Yes, from my June 6 request.
And so, what did the information say?
They gave me a map that I had taken to Jack, I think his name's Jack Remington. I have to look that up here. Yes. Yeah, and he declared that wasn't the correct map. And so that's why I was desperate to meet with Mr. Vascosco. And I said, "Listen, review this map for me because it's not looking right." And so, he didn't meet with me. He refused to meet with me multiple times. And then he agreed to meet with me after the violation was done. And that was 140 days after the request for me to meet with him. My extensive efforts to cooperatively reach compliance in this department were being conducted in a dual-track style at this point in time, simultaneously with enforcement activities. Which means they were trying to prosecute me as I was still doing the process of meeting with planning and going through the system.
I have a question.
Yes.
So you were going through this process, you knew there was a problem going on, and you still put a tenant in the property, knowing...
I didn't know if there was a problem. That was the problem.
It sounds like everything that I'm hearing, that you knew there was a problem, you weren't getting responses, that you knew something was wrong.
I didn't.
And you put a person in the property?
Yeah, I had no choice but to put the person in the property. Did I know something was wrong? No, I was trying to find out whether, I was still confused. Until this day, I'm still confused on that property. Unfortunately.
I have one other question.
Sure.
You went through a court proceeding, and I'm assuming that this court proceeding, you presented all the same, basically the same information?
No. I was there by myself, unfortunately, I couldn't afford a lawyer. So, I tried to, but they did do it on this section. And I did have the judgment, and I provided that. They did not provide you a copy of the judgment, but I did. And he had marked, he didn't mark guilty, I marked advised. And then he dismissed all the administration costs. And he suspended the fines. Oh, no, he dismissed half of it before we even heard the court hearings. He's two out of the four, he dismissed right away. And then he advised on the others, and he suspends, suspension of fines, which means he didn't charge me any administration costs. And that's Attachment one Q, which is the judgment.
That's the court cost, not what we're hearing today?
Yes, that was the judgment court cost, yes. No, one Q is the judgment that he marked advised. He did not mark guilty. Although they say guilty a lot. She was up here saying, "I was guilty, guilty, guilty in the court." But no, the paperwork I submitted, the judgment was for advised. So we're moving on to costs. And by that time, I had already sold the property. I couldn't figure out what's going on, so I had sold the property.
Do you tell the new property owner that it is in violation?
I sold it in the correct manner, yes.
You know, I'm kind of struggling to find one Q. What did the court?
Oh, here.
What was the judgment, in your mind, of what the court told you?
I provided that, yes, today.
Well, basically, did the court agree with the county on the zoning?
To me, my impression was that it was pending. And that they said, basically, that I'm gonna advise. They threw out two of the four before it was even heard. And he says, "At this point in time, I'm gonna advise on these matters." My opinion was, he sent us back out and to work it back out. And so, and he says, "If we're brought back," then he'd make a decision at that point in time. That was my impression of that day.
But you required the tenant to vacate after that?
He asked me, not to these, he asked me to, because in his mind, he wasn't sure about safety issues. So he didn't ask me to vacate the individual based on what their standing was. He says, "In my mind, I'm not sure exactly what the safety issues are with this unit. So just in case something happens, and then I don't want," he says, "I don't want your tenant to come back on you with any kind of lawsuits or anything." So he did recommend, until everything's resolved with Kathy, that, or the planning department, that I give him a 30-day, which I did comply with. I agreed in court, I complied with it. And then, as far as I was concerned, this issue is dead. The property was sold. I complied with court. And the property was sold within compliance at that point in time. And the new owner was involved. I thought everything was done.
Okay, it sounds like you have a copy of the judgment from the court?
Yes.
Somehow, we need to have that. Somehow, we need to have that submitted into?
Here you go, I found it.
I'm struggling here to find it.
May I provide it?
Is it a regular package or rigid pack?
Well, Richard is reading that, let me ask a question here. It was mentioned that these two pieces of property are the building, the main building in the garage, are two separate addresses? Is that correct? I couldn't find those two separate addresses. But I'm looking at this title report, it says 1402040 Holly Way Vista Way. Now, what's the address of the garage, then?
12, I'm sorry.
Because if the garage has a separate address, and this is the address of the main structure, then the title report is incorrect, saying it's a duplex.
Title reports are generally tied to a parcel number, not an address, so it might not list both addresses separately.
And both these are on the same parcel? Is that correct, both on the same parcel?
Yeah, I think so, right? Yes, that's correct.
Thank you for that.
Can I go back to the judgment? Okay, so, and maybe we can confirm this with counsel, but it says here on Placer County 1504-121A, and it says it has a G, which I guess must mean guilty, and suspend fines. On Placer County's PCC 1504-126, it's got a G, which I'm assuming is guilty, suspends fines. And on Placer County 1702-030A, it says dismiss. And so, there must have been three charges, and one was dismissed and two were determined to be guilty?
On the judgment, next to guilty up top, it is not marked, he actually advised, and that is the judgment.
I don't know, I'd ask counsel to confirm what you're saying.
Yeah, I was?
We don't represent the court, so I can only interpret what I'm seeing here. I interpret it the same way you do, is that the G means guilty. I'm also basing that on Kathy Winsted's testimony. She was present at the court proceeding, that there was a termination of guilty. In terms of the fines, those particular code provisions deal with fines, specifically 1504-121 deals with fines if you're found guilty of a misdemeanor. The court basically suspended those fines. So I want to make sure the commission understands that that finding of the court dealt with fines within the criminal context, not the administrative costs that we're here to deal with on appeal.
But you wouldn't suspend a fine if you weren't found guilty first, correct?
The court has the discretion, if the court doesn't want to impose a fine.
But if you're not found guilty, there's no fine imposed.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to costs, which is, this is what we're all here for. And I thought everything was done, settled, and then I receive a one-page demand letter for 3430.35, labeled "Request for Payment Code Enforcement Fees Dated June 29, 2012, Postmarked July 2." No other documents pertaining to fee costs before this time that I ever received. And that's attachment 2A. Now, attachment 2A is a request for payment, it's a demand letter. So, I say, "Well, why did I get a demand letter for?" And in my opinion, when someone asks you for money, and then says, "Oh, if you don't pay it, you're going to owe more," then I'm thinking, "Why?" It's almost like you're getting a letter saying you've won the lottery, but unless you pay the taxes, you're going to lose all this. I thought it was just fictitious. So with that being said, I met, I appealed, I said, "What's the request for payment?" And I delivered the request for hearing with Mr. Wagner, chief building official, and disputed any and all costs, and asked for an itemized cost, itemization of costs. And I disputed any and all costs, because the letter didn't give me any detailed, broken-down, itemized costs to look at. That's why I said any and all. I met with Mr. Wagner, and he asked Ms. Winsted, zoning enforcement officer. She provided me with the requested itemized documentation, and she said no. After the meeting, Ms. Winsted stopped me in the lobby and handed me a code enforcement worksheet. The code enforcement, the worksheet appeared to have multiple individuals' handwritings and scribble on it. And she also handed me a hand-calculated page. This is attachment 2C, let's see, attachment 2D1 and 2. So if you look at attachment 2, attachments 2, D1, to me, it appears like nothing more than a Dairy Queen receipt, or I don't even know what it is. And attachment D2 is, all it is, is a worksheet. Now, I've done administration work for 13 years, and I was out in the field, and I have to document. And I have to document in an itemized manner, which means if anybody reads this, or if you're going to ask for money, or you're detailing your time and effort, and you're going to get paid for it, then it needs to be documented in an itemized manner. And this just is not, and it's not even close to the requested itemization of costs. So, with that being said, I couldn't read it, it was abbreviated, it's in handwriting, it's in other people's handwriting. There, the, a lot of it, I couldn't even read. There was numbers on there, 555, nothing was detailed. So, what did I do? I delivered a letter to Mr. Johnson, agency director, requesting a case review, so I could go over saying, "I didn't have it, I never received it in itemized, what's going on?" All I got is this chicken scratch and a letter that's from a hand calculator. So, I appealed in time, and Mr. Johnson's office called, 321-3013, no, 2013, it's not that far in advance, scheduling the hearing for 6/6/2013. I received call from Mr. Johnson's office in 5:15 cancelling my hearing without a reason. I was told I would receive a letter of explanation. Received letter via email from Mr. Johnson's office dated 5/24/2013. Mr. Johnson said he already came to a conclusion. But here's my conclusion. 17.62-09E3A-B, and hopefully, you've been provided a conclusion. And they base their costs on my lack of diligence. However, I would conclude that I was actually proactive in all these proceedings, but I was actually handcuffed by the planning department not providing information for about over 140 days, and not meeting with me for over 150 days. So I was very due diligent, in fact, they were not. And in fact, they didn't adhere to timeframes, they created extensive delays, and they put roadblocks in my way. The result is that the costs reflected in the department's code enforcement worksheet were not incurred necessary in light of my efforts. In addition, and this is from a lawyer's attachment GPG2, that Ms. Bianic fits all the criteria stated under Code Section 1762.09E3A-B, showing also that the department's costs are not valid, or at least not contributed by the lack of diligence on my part of Ms. Bianic. I would also argue that an authority cannot hold a person hostage by refusing to meet with them while a person who reports to him or her is continuing to add additional documentation for potential charges to file. Therefore, any costs that might have incurred during the time Mr. Roscosco refused to meet with me should not be my responsibility to pay. Despite that, efforts to cooperatively reach compliance with the planning department were conducted in a dual-track style simultaneously with enforcement activities. Therefore, no trial should have been pursued by the planning department. I was not afforded my right of due process. In fact, they should have actually submitted that after I met with Mr. Roscosco, in my opinion. And also, the Placer County Superior Court, the judgment, I'd see in it as advised, because that's what's marked on the document. Two out of the four were dismissed, and they suspended, and no fines.
Are you looking at a different document than what we just saw?
Yes.
Because there was, there's only three on the documents.
She actually submitted for four, and one was A and B. So, if you, actually, it'd be easier on. There you go. It's attachments 1K. Code enforcement. It says 1, 2, and 3, but 3 included 17, I believe it says 090A, and then 11, no, 17.32.01OB. So there was actually an A and a B under number 3, so. And that was attachments 1K.
1K?
While he's looking, I'm going to ask you a question.
Sure.
Do you deny that the county informed you early on, prior to you renting that space, that it was in violation to rent that space out to anyone? Do you deny that? Because Kathy stated in her testimony that you, that she met with you for an hour at the property prior to you having anybody living in that garage space, and informed you that there was, that it was not a permitted space to rent. Do you deny that she did, told you that?
She told me that the property was in violation, we only met for about five to 10 minutes, and that I had to go down to the planning department to get more information, which I did.
Well, at that point, then, it was, it should have been clear to you that you should not rent that until you had that cleared, that issue cleared up, and you went ahead and flagrantly went ahead and rented that space out, knowing that there was a question on that.
Which I tried for six months to find out.
Why did you go ahead and rent it?
Because it was my understanding at the time, after six months and no information, that all the information that had been provided by the title company, the county, the planning department at that point in time, as well as the title company and my broker, all felt that the second, and plus the address on it, and that everything was zoned correctly and permitted.
Then, when she mailed you a violation of the property, and you're saying you did not receive that?
Yeah, and I went down there, too. Now, I've been trying to work out the violation, find out if there was a violation. That's the whole issue I was held up on, whether it was permitted, and whether, and the major part, the major issue, was whether or not, what zoning it was. Because even if they said I needed a permit, which permit should I pull? Was it still residential, or did they change it to OP? And at that point in time, it was still residential, in my opinion, from all the records, so.
You say you didn't receive a notice of violation?
No, and you know what, I had asked them, they had asked them, you know, throughout the time. Like she said, I've been there 20 times. And although she says, you know, there's violations against the property, was one mailed, not that I remember receiving, though.
Mr. Chairman, ask a question. If you did not receive the notice of violation, how did you know when to show up to court?
Oh, you're talking, oh, I'm sorry, the violation to court? I thought you meant, she had said she, after meeting me, that she had sent me a letter of violation. That's what I thought he was talking about.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I did receive that one, absolutely. And so, it was done in a dual-track style. In my understanding, it's advised. I think half the portion was dismissed. And then I went down, since I didn't receive an itemized report, so the planning department's administrative practices do not appear to provide any oversight in regards to charges, administration costs, whereby not providing any accountability and measures against fraud. It appears the planning department is self-policing itself. No documentation of countermeasures were shown to be in existence or provided to me, such as mileage documentation, telephone records, time computer activity, court documentation showing time duration, or travel records. No administration records documented who someone spoke to, what violations were, if any, discussed, or which property they were discussing at the time. The planning department has failed to provide me any justifiable, detailed, or accurate accounting of any administration fees that meets the standard under Code Section 17.62.100. The information provided by Kathy Winsted is incomplete, unreadable shorthand field notes, and that is no way should be used as proof that I owe money to the county. Furthermore, the field notes are not an itemized cost breakdown, or at best, a daily activity log worksheet. Most of the field notes have little to do with the one issue of zoning, but rather, a multitude of other unrelated items that the county has no right to charge me for. It is my strong opinion, supported by my records, these field notes are handy and accurate in both specific information and time accountability. The documentation is highly disorganized, illegible, and has so many coded abbreviations reducing the document to a non-understandable mess. The hand-calculated page, attachment 2D1, provided as additional documentation of itemization of costs by Kathy Winsted, also fails to meet Placer Code, County Code, Chapter 17, Section 17.62.090-100, and being that it does not provide any information pertaining to administration costs or references any administration costs, in fact, it doesn't reference anything at all. In addition, under Section 17.62.090 Recovery of Costs, and 17.62.100 Additional Processing Fees of the Placer County Code, it appears the department has billed Ms. Bianic using the wrong procedure. First Section 17.62.09A defines costs for the purpose of 17.62.09D cited in your request for payment as being reasonably related to nuisance abatement cases where no permit is required to correct nuisance. Therefore, your request for payment does not provide authority for costs. It purports to pass on to Ms. Bianic, and that's referenced from my lawyer, attachment 2G-PG2. Planning department/ zoning official failed to mail any documentation to me by certified mail, even though they knew that I had worked out of state most of the time. And I just wanted to let you know that- And I am, I just wanted to let you know that I had this property, that I did not do the violation, as Kathy said. The previous owner did, and he did that in 1985, I would think, and he did pull permits to build that in 1985, and if it wasn't corrected, I believe the planning department, as well as the building department, is responsible to, for making sure that those permits are closed out and not extend to new property owners. From 1985, the second property was built, did the addition. The zoning violation wasn't against me. The zoning violation was against the previous owner in 2006. I purchased this property in 2011. They had five years after someone reported that zoning violation to correct it, and they did not. And that gave the previous owner a chance to pass it on to me, who was, who had all the documentation that I purchased a duplex, two single-family homes. And to this point, I actually sold the property within a year of, actually, I've only owned the property less than one year, and the new property owner has owned it a year and a half now, and this issue is still unresolved. So, I just wanted to let you know that due diligence on my part was definitely the case, and I tried, was unsuccessful, and the county breakdown, I was never given an itemized breakdown, and I believe that the itemized breakdown count, I'm not sure can possibly be even provided right now, because itemization takes a lot of work, and so.
You know, I guess I'm really puzzled here, because it seems like, rather than a, a lot of information and a lot of kind of frustration, it seems like there was really just one question, you know, and I'm really baffled. Did you ever ask for some kind of, did you ask for a document on the zoning?
Yes.
Because that seems like that would be.
June zero six.
Huh?
Yes.
And so, that should be available almost at the front desk. I don't understand.
Yes.
You know, you may have to look yourself to verify it, but, you know, I'm really baffled about, you know, what the problem is here, because at least I am under the pressure, it's not that hard for anybody to find out what the zoning, even Jack Remington can come in here, if you are working with him, I don't know if you paid him or what, but, but he can come in, and he can tell you what the zoning is.
Yes, and he told me.
What'd he say?
A residential professional. He gave me that map. It was never transferred over to OP. And I came in, and I was told, I would ask for maps at the time, and this was the first month I owned this property. I asked for all the maps, and I, and I even asked for maps in my letter, because when I went up to planning and I spoke to Evelyn, she said, "In the process of the county moving from the previous building over to this building, its new establishment, that hundreds of maps were destroyed, and there was no documentation map-wise that my property had the zoning of OP on it." And I might add that Kathy Winstead provided a map for you here, and I still didn't have the designation of OP. No maps included the designation of OP, and that was another issue. In my mind, it was still residential, and, and Jack Remington's and he.
Well, yeah, I hear that.
He is, too.
Yeah, the county.
The county don't have any records.
The county disagrees with you, so I guess we can, we can ask the county again to somehow verify how somebody finds out about the zoning. But that seems, that was a basic question.
It should have been, and I even put it in writing, June, and the documentation and the map that they gave me in November, it was not an OP.
But then you went ahead and rented it, when you knew?
That was before. That was in September, after about five months, and I hadn't received any information. I'm thinking, you know what? It's, it's a duplex. It's two single-family homes, and I couldn't afford, I was either giving it back to the previous owner, because it was, financially, by them not providing me any information for that period of time, and me leaving it vacant, waiting on that information.
Well, you had one part, you had one part of it you could rent.
Yeah.
So you had some income on it.
Yeah, after I cleared those violations, which I did.
What'd you?
They said I had violations on that property, too, and I had to clear those, and I didn't have income off of that.
Why didn't you clear them on the other one, then?
I actually cleared those violations. It was the building violations, so I actually cleared on both properties. And I, and as the process went on, I talked to Curtis in the building department, and he said, in fact, that the, I was also putting on roofs on the structure, and the building department actually cleared my roof certain, they cleared my electrical panel, as Kathy said, on that second unit. So, I was issued permits on that second property to clear those, and they, and those permits were, I believe, residential, because electrical permit said residential, the roof they inspected and signed off on. So I cleared all the physical building aspects to make it safe, that sort of thing. But what they're saying, the violation that they're saying is the zoning violation, whereas they're saying it was OP, and I was saying it was residential professional, and all maps indicated resident professional. I had five agencies tell me it was single-family residence duplex. So, that was the issues. And then it came to cost breakdown, which.
You know, it seems like, though, I guess what I'm questioning is, you know, if you're hearing it's OP from the county, and you ask a lot of other people what it is, it seems like the county, if that's what they're telling you, they have, they have more weight in the argument than your own interpretation or other people's interpretations. So, you know, the only thing you can really do at that point, even though I can hear your frustration, is to actually have the county clear it up before you rent it.
I would have liked to have them do that.
Well, you know, and I think that's what the problem is. You didn't do that, and, and when you rented it, then it became a violation.
Mr. Chair, could I ask you, that, we could go on for extended period of time. Could we ask Kathy to come back, because I want to clarify a couple of quick things with her, if that's acceptable?
It is. That's where you come to.
Kathy, the first thing I would like to know is that meeting that you first had with her, you said it was about an hour that you talked with her outside of the building.
That's correct.
And she says it was five minutes. In your mind, do you believe that, in your communication to her, that you were absolutely clear to her that the structure, from the garage standpoint, was not something that could be inhabited, that it was not permitted by the county to be able to be used as a living residential unit? Was she clear on that, in your mind?
I was absolutely clear on that, and if I could, for the record, looking at the notice of violation that was subsequently sent as.
After that meeting.
As a result of that March 31st inspection. And those are sent certified mail and regular mail. The tenant actually did receive their certified copy, and they signed for that copy. And the certified copy from Ms. Beannick was returned unclaimed. They attempted service three times. It was unclaimed, but the regular mail copy was never returned to the county. So it's the, the inference is that the regular mail copy was, it's not uncommon for people to not accept a certified copy. They don't want to, they, I believe that they think that it's proof that they got it. Well, the inference is that they got it, because the other copy didn't come back. Why didn't we receive the other one back if it was not delivered to Ms. Beannick? And I do have, I do have the copy in the, in our file. And also, if I could, on that March 31st notice, Ms. Tanya Christian Beannick was the owner at that time, to her address of record on Cosmo Court in Rockland. It, you know, we had even unknown occupant at the site is the location, that 12040, and that was received. Both copies were received, one signed for. And in that notice, it states penalty for failure to comply, and this is a standard document, pursuant to Placer County Code, Section seventeen sixty-two zero nine zero, "The county may charge the property owner for all administrative costs associated with enforcement of the above cited code violations. At the conclusion of this code enforcement case, the property owner will receive a summary of administrative costs associated with the processing of the case at an hourly rate in effect at the time that the case is initiated. The property owner has the right to object to the charges, et cetera, et cetera." You know, as she filed the appeal, and we are here today. The language on that notice of violation states, "The residential use and conversion of the storage space above the garage and the bathroom in the garage were done without benefit of permit. As discussed extensively, the existing conversions require an after-the-fact permit. The use must be allowed in the OP zone district." It then goes on to identify those same three sections that she was subsequently cited for, seventeen zero-two zero-three zero A, that's the unlawful land use. That's kind of our catch-all. That says that you've got to comply with every section in that zoning ordinance. What Ms. Beannick felt was another charge was actually just clarification that that, the section in the zoning ordinance that she didn't comply with was that, that B section that she quoted to you as the fourth charge. That is not a fourth charge. It's just further clarification.
Question for Mr. Severson.
Yeah, Kathy, did, were you ever aware of, or did you ever see a disclosure statement for the sale of this property when it transferred?
No, I did not, but I did speak with the real estate agent on February 14, 2011, with regard to OP uses and allowed uses, and he indicated that he would let the buyer know. With the timing of her, I, I don't know that it was Tanya, but with the timing of the closure of escrow, it makes sense that it was Ms. Beannick at that time, and that was reported. I don't have verification of that.
Well, I was thinking, in terms of the uses, whether he disclosed that there were illegal uses as part of the sale, and did she choose to ignore those, or did she not know about it? And I'm just trying to.
Yeah, and I can't speak to that. I did not see a disclosure document.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I guess I have a question, because there was a lot of discussion about difficulty finding out information, but, you know, the OP designation, how did you find out about that?
It's standard, it's actually available on the internet. Anytime we have a case file set up, the zoning is confirmed and part of my case file. And I'll share with you that we did actually have a meeting with Ms. Beannick, Ms. Maxwell, myself, George Rososco, and Jack Remington with regard to this map. There was extensive discussion about that. Mrs. Beannick is confident that she's owned residential professional, but that zone district no longer exists. It was done away with, and the property is, in fact, zoned off as professional.
Well, if I wanted to find out what the zoning was now, how would I do it? Do I have to have a meeting with somebody in here, or?
For the historic zoning?
No, for the OP zoning. You know, you own a piece of property.
No, you go to the internet.
And I want to know what your zoning is?
Yeah, you look at.
Yeah, how do you find that out, if you're just a regular citizen?
Put in the ATM number.
Yeah, it comes up on the internet, or any of the counterstaff can tell you across the counter what the zoning is.
So, I guess I'm puzzled where she was talking about trying to get information. Why, why was it so difficult?
I can't speak to that, sir.
Okay. Yeah, rhetorical, sorry about that.
Kathy, you said that that one zoning you referenced no longer exists. When did that change?
I believe at the, I'd have to look at my minute notes, but I want to say George Rososco's statements at that meeting with Jack Remington was 1994, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
Any other further questions?
Yeah, I do have maybe one. I just want. Let me see, we have a, you know, the appellant asks that attachment D be removed from the document, and at least what I was hearing is this is for clarification at the planning commission meeting, but the number at the bottom, the 3430.35, that's the same, I mean, well, I guess, does that number appear in the, where you have your, your log?
Where, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
You say that you have a daily log that you keep of the time you spend on these projects?
It's the calculation of the time spent on that log. Does that, do we write that on the log? No, it's summarized in the letter, the fee letter, the demand for payment letter. It's summarized there, with that first letter that goes to the property owner.
In other words, if you take your log, and you took the times on your log.
It's going to correlate to that attachment.
Yeah, because I was looking at it, and it's sort of a quick audit of it.
So, in our summary document, the numbers didn't change?
That's correct.
If there's no further questions, I'm going to cut off comment and bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sir, please.
I would like to oppose the deputy denying the appeal.
You got a second?
All second.
We have a motion in a second. Free to vote. All in favor of denying the appeal? In favor of the denial? Please.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? In that case, the appeal is denied.
I think we want to mention, too, that there is no appeal of the planning commission's decision. This decision is final.
And finally, the last item on our agenda. Are we, do we need a break?
Just a quick, make it just a quick, quick one.
Just a quick, two minutes, and we'll hear the final on the agenda.
Do they have one second?
I don't want to delay the rest of you that.
They usually have one second.
I would still like.
You look like you're worried out.
I'd like to see a disclosure statement, see if she's saying it's legally, it has to be done by a senior officer. I'm sure that's what they're doing. But she's totally about passing this for convenience and stuff. That disclosure statement, she's got to be there.
Oh, yeah, she should have gone after that guy.
I mean, this is crazy.
In this particular case, with the recommended conditions of approval...
I didn't see it in there, but it didn't say that they would be reviewed annually or anything like that.
Well, to have a valid use permit, he has to maintain the business license. And there's some other wording with the condition of approval. It wouldn't be a typical case where a minor use permit would run with the land, you know, once it's exercised for basically perpetuity. In this case, it's more specific to the individual, the applicant, and they have to maintain the annual, it's an annual business license.
Yeah, well, that's fine and dandy, because you can come in and pay your fee. But I'm just thinking mainly if one of those conditions is violated, or a complaint was issued by anybody, actually, would the staff go out, review, and revoke if necessary? Can it be revoked, I guess is what I'm saying?
Yes, definitely. And then also part of this, to do this, to operate this kind of business, Mr. Gogler, the applicant already has the alcohol, tobacco, and firearm license. It's part of the package, license one. There's a license six. There's a California Department of Justice approval there. There's our local sheriff department sign off for a license. So, any one of these ATF or our county sheriff department would and make unannounced inspections or visits at any time.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask you my question?
I have a question.
Do we have, I don't need to know the names and location, but do we have other applications
similar to this existing today, anywhere in the county?
The only record I could find and I know about is in twenty twelve, in Clipper Gap area. There was a very similar minor use permit application request for sales and repair of firearms as a home occupation in a detached garage on the property. And the applicant name is under Micro Technics, Inc., and Mr. Gary Gogler. This shows the property, approximately two point four acres. And you see the major road, Auburn Folsom, and it's on Twin Rocks Road on the south side, approximately nine hundred feet from the intersection of Auburn Folsom and Twin Rocks Road. And this is the existing zoning in the area of RSAGB one hundred or two point three acre minimum. This shows the sketch of the property, the driveway coming in here, and the house approximately thirty-two hundred square foot, and then the two-car garage approximately, he'd used one-half of that detached garage for his home occupation. And with the home occupation, it can be located in the residential structure, or it can be in a residential accessory structure on the property, or in this case, in the detached garage. And this shows off of the south side of Twin Rocks Road, the entry gate, private entry gate driveway going in. And then the two-car garage is set back at the end of the driveway towards the west of the house. And then this is the, just a single-door entry into the detached garage. And I just read a couple of the items from the proposed business statement. The business statement submitted by the applicant states that the majority of the sales activity, Internet sales, would be conducted online from Micro Technics to other licensed dealers and to entities of the federal and state government, with occasional sales or transfers to individuals or other licensed dealers. And also, part of this proposal is the custom loading or reloading of ammunition for rifles. He also goes on to say in the business statement that bulk ammunition orders would be drop shipped from a factory distributor to the customer buyer, and all business activities would be conducted within the detached garage. And one of the performance standards of the home occupation is that there be no external appearance of the home occupation land use. It would have to be all contained within the detached garage. And then he goes on, on the second paragraph of the project description, if he's custom loading or reloading ammunition, all test firing of firearms would be conducted at off-site shooting range facilities. And this is proposed as a part-time business. And there would not be any inventory of firearms or ammunition kept on the property. There'd be no employees, and there's no proposed new construction. You'd just use the existing garage. And with this, since it was originally scheduled for the zoning administrator hearing on July eighteenth, the zoning administrator bumped it up to the Planning Commission. We had fifty or sixty letters from neighbors, letters and/or emails, and almost every one was in opposition of the approval for a minor use permit. And it was noticed ten days ahead. That's how the neighbors, some neighbors got the notice, or sent to different subdivisions. The notice is sent to the Granite Bay MAC, the Granite Bay Community Association, and subdivisions within Granite Bay to the HOA or that sort of thing. And that's how the notice was found out by the neighbors. Since that time, since it's been re-noticed, it was re-noticed for the Planning Commission. And we've also received more correspondence. We put in the staff report, addressed five different issues, including increase in traffic, risk of fire and explosion, number, issue three, it would promote criminal activities, issue four, that it's not compatible with the character of the immediate residential neighborhood, and then issue five, that the proposed land use is not allowed in the zone district. And also, part of this process, it normally wouldn't go to the Granite Bay MAC, but because this was being heard and bumped up to the Planning Commission, it went to the Wednesday, August seventh MAC. And they had, in the staff report, as a recommendation, their motion is included in the staff report. And staff recommends to the Planning Commission approval of the minor use permit, subject to the following findings and recommended conditions of approval. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions now or after. Questions from the board?
Roy, so everything's contained in the garage, so there's no signage outside of the house that looks just like in the picture there? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. He didn't propose any signage, say, at the gate or anything like that on the property. So, there's nothing approved or proposed in that regard. And it's, would need to be totally contained within the detached garage.
And I guess my next, next question is obvious. It's home occupation use, but maybe just to enlighten us, go over what can be done in home occupation use. I mean, he's proposing gunsmithing and reloading ammunition for resale. But if somebody came in, would they have to get a use permit if they were doing tax returns out of their garage, or selling stuff on eBay out of their garage?
This is the only category we have in the allowed uses. And there's a list of them from accounting, bookkeeping, tax return preparation, making of clothing, computer programming, art, dance, music, or swimming lessons, just an example. This is the only category, sales and repair of firearms as a category that a minor use permit must first be obtained pursuant to the provisions of this home occupation section. And I mentioned performance standards. For example, in this case, you'd be allowed one commercial delivery per day. And then there was the performance standard number seven in our zoning ordinance, where you'd be allowed no more than three patrons visiting the site at any one time, and a maximum of fifteen patrons per day. There's a number of home occupations, which is limited to two. And Mr. Gogler currently has one home occupation under Micro Technics as a consulting. And if you look at the website with the assessor, it shows this one as a second home occupation. He has applied and done the paperwork, but it is pending. We wouldn't sign off in planning or engineering and surveying here unless and until there was a minor use permit approved. So, the second one that shows up is for this request, and it's pending. It hasn't been approved.
Roy, did I hear you right? There's home occupations, I know there's a variety of home occupations, even in the city of Roseville, that it can be allowed. I guess you go in and get it. And, but are all home applications have to come to, well, you need a permit form, right? But this, or did you say this is the only home occupation that requires a conditional use permit?
Yes, minor use permit. There are uses that aren't allowed, just straight out, aren't allowed.
Yeah, aren't allowed. I understand that. But the ones that are allowed, this is the only one that needs a conditional use?
A minor use permit. And the others that I mentioned on that list are allowed, but the individual comes in with their business license application, and they would get what's called a clearance. At the counter, typically at our counter, the planning technician would look at it and maybe discuss it with the planner in that area. Engineering and surveying would look at it. And typically, if it's allowable use in the zone district, they would just sign off on it. And if you look at our code, our zoning ordinance, there's only forestry, open space, and W is water influence. Those are the only three zone districts that don't allow any home occupation. Every residential zone district would allow it.
And just a general question on a minor use permit, are they good forever, or are they reviewed periodically of any kind, not just this one, but any other minor use permit?
In this particular case, with the recommended conditions of approval...
I didn't see it in there, but it didn't say that they would be reviewed annually or anything like that.
Well, to have a valid use permit, he has to maintain the business license. And there's some other wording with the condition of approval. It wouldn't be a typical case where a minor use permit would run with the land, you know, once it's exercised for basically perpetuity. In this case, it's more specific to the individual, the applicant, and they have to maintain the annual, it's an annual business license.
Yeah, well, that's fine and dandy, because you can come in and pay your fee. But I'm just thinking mainly if one of those conditions is violated, or a complaint was issued by anybody, actually, would the, would the staff go out, review, and revoke if necessary? Can it be revoked, I guess is what I'm saying?
Yes, definitely. And then also part of this, to do this, to operate this kind of business, Mr. Gogler, the applicant already has the alcohol, tobacco, and firearm license. It's part of the package, license one. There's a license six. There's a California Department of Justice approval there. There's our local sheriff department sign off for a license. So, any one of these ATF or our county sheriff department would and make unannounced inspections or visits at any time.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask you my question?
I have a question.
My good.
Do we have, I don't need to know the names and location, but do we have other applications similar to this existing today, anywhere in the county?
The only record I could find and I know about is in twenty twelve, in Clipper Gap area. There was a very similar minor use permit application request for sales and repair of firearms for home occupation. And the name was Fanone, the last name. And it didn't go, it wasn't bumped up to the Planning Commission. It went to zoning administrator hearing, and it was approved in twenty twelve. And Alex Fish was the planner assigned to it. And it would have gone to George Rosasco and a zoning administrator hearing.
Have we had any issues with that permit?
Not that I'm aware of. I know, some of the background, when it went to hearing, there were certain people that testified against it. And it was approved with similar, some similar conditions, but there was some difference to the way our conditions are worded.
Thank you. Just keep... We're proposing to limit the number of deliveries he can have in any given day commercially to one?
Well, our performance standards, when you go to the home occupation section, actually have that.
Okay. Is there any limit as to how many deliveries the rest of us can get in one day?
No.
Okay. And we're proposing that he can only have three customers onsite at one time and fifteen at any given day?
Yes.
Is there any limit as to, as to how many visitors his neighbors or the rest of us that live in the county can have?
No.
Is there any provision to determine whether it's his grandma coming to visit, or a customer? How do we figure out, and those who are going to sit outside and keep tally looking for a violation, how do we determine whether he's just having company or a customer?
That's a good question.
Thank you. That means he doesn't have an answer.
Any other questions? In that case, thank you. And if the applicant would come forward?
Good afternoon. I'm Gary Gogler. And what I thought I would do is just kind of reiterate what was presented at the MAC. And in specific, to keep it brief, is what I'm proposing is, and what it is not, Roy said a lot of this. It's not a full-time business. I'm a microelectronics consultant. I'm not proposing a stocking store of guns, no gun inventory, no ammunition inventory for sale. It's not a walk-in store like a brick-and-mortar like J&amp;G on Barton Road, Cabot-Stalman. It is a brokering agent, paper and Internet transactions. It's a business conducting transactions with out-of-state distributors and factories. It's a business responding to sources sought for federal and state requirements for bulk ammunition purchases. And that was where the drop shipment would have been done. So, it would, the bulk ammunition would not come to my site at all. It would go directly from the manufacturer to the Department of Homeland Security, Department of Defense, and so forth. And I will do custom loads for accuracy for people who like to compete in shooting events and hunters who are looking for better accuracy from their There was an assertion made that this project deals with explosives, and I find that rather
How many of these would you have in your possession at any one time?
Probably one. There's only so much one guy can do.
No, I didn't know, I just wanted to see how big of a, of a...
Oh, and it can take, it could take a month to figure out what the right load is.
Okay, and I, I'm not a, I'm not, you know, that first in, in guns and stuff, but okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to maybe kind of compare if I could a little bit. You know, I know a lot of people, they reload shells themselves.
Mm-hmm.
And, I don't know, it says there's a limit on how much powder you can have in your garage?
If you really follow the law, the limit is twenty pounds of smokeless powder, five pounds of black powder, and that was in the fire marshal's statement.
And that would apply for hobby as well as your business?
I would think so, but there's no way to tell how much powder people are going to actually have if they're not saying they have the powder or seeking, you know, permission. They could have fifty pounds, and you'd never know.
So, are you gonna, is your operation going to be much different than if you're just, maybe you reload right now?
That's what I do right now. I reload for myself.
Is your operation going to ramp up now because of what you're proposing?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
For, for clarification, there is no limit as to how much a hobbyist, an individual person can, can possess in the way of gunpowder for their personal use. Speaking with the fire marshal, the requirements placed on the applicant are the same as, as any gun store, and you can actually have more powder than that presence, you just need a, a formal powder magazine to store it in after quantities exceed those. But for the rest of us, we can have all we want, and we don't have to keep it in anything fancy, and there's no rules.
I would like to commend you for coming forward and asking for a permit. I mean, you could have certainly, as, you know, you're not going to be putting enough signs, you could have certainly gone ahead and done this without coming to the county, and probably nobody would have known it.
It would have been against the law.
Well, you, that doesn't necessarily mean you couldn't have done it.
Well, I believe in the law.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to be sure that he reserves the right to come back and address comments or concerns that are brought up.
I would appreciate that.
Certainly. I'm going to open up the meeting for public comment now, and I'm going to ask that you constrain yourself to three minutes of speech time, and if you'll come up and give your name, we'll start.
My name is Stephen Wright. I live at eight one two two North Lake Circle, in, in the Lakeview Hills area. And I've looked at this recently, and I have some problems on it. One, I noticed the fire department has requirements, I, I don't see anything about inclusion of those requirements and conditions of approval. Are those automatically included?
We can include them, please.
Good, good. It seems very desirable. And also, there's no restriction on signs. He's not proposing any signs. Is there any restriction on signs? And, and it'd seem like it'd be desirable to go ahead and have a restriction on signage, because we have signage out there, there's going to be more traffic and more concern from residents in the area. Also, his driveway is in the vicinity, is on Twin Oaks Road, it's in the vicinity of Morningside Drive, Turner Road, Blue Oak Lane, there, there is a vertical curve in the area, and the access to the property is reasonable for a residential use. However, if you have commercial vehicles coming and going, and I've noticed some of the comments indicated that the applicant travels a lot. So, I'm wondering what happens if a delivery arrives, the applicant is not there, and the truck has to back out onto Twin Oaks Road with limited sight distance, that seems like a problem. There, there is a gate, it's a beautiful gate, as you can tell, but there's no turnaround. And it seems like if they had a turnaround where the truck could pull in, and if he couldn't gain entrance, he could back up, go into the turnaround, back around two or three times and leave, then it would be a lot safer. As to the amount of, of ammunition and powder he can have on the site, it sounds like it's, there is no restriction really, but it has to be accommodated in a certain manner, and it sounds like inspections can be performed. I'm not sure who's going to do the inspections on that. Although, again, we're in an area where there's a high fire hazard, where we have to pay it an extra high rate for fire service in our area, and I, I think anything which is going to increase the fire hazard should be looked at very carefully. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time and consideration.
Chair, a couple of questions that he asked, could we get Paula and Roy to just answer them?
Now, rather than later discussion?
There wasn't any condition regarding signage, because he didn't propose it, so it wouldn't be allowed. The other thing is the, the five stipulations that were part of the Lawrence Benton Court letter from the South Placer Fire District, they are all included in condition number five of the recommended conditions.
Thank you. The next gentleman, please, at the podium.
Good afternoon, members of the planning commission. My name is Jeremy Price. I'm an attorney, and I represent David and Paula Campbell. They own the property at eighty twenty Twin Rocks Road, which is immediately adjacent to, to Mr. Gogler's property. They oppose the application, and we respect the request that the planning commission deny it. They've submitted two letters to, to the county in opposition, one in, in July and one just yesterday. I'm not going to rehash what's in those letters. I trust they're in the, in the administrative record, but I would like to make just a couple of points. Initially, I want to make sure the, the commission understands my clients aren't anti-gun, or that they don't oppose these types of businesses. In fact, they welcome them, but they do so, welcome them in the proper location. A garage in a quiet residential neighborhood where children play, where families reside, where animals and pets are, is not the proper location to operate a firearms business. In fact, there's one other one, as we learned, in this, in our county, that's in Clipper Gap. Granite Bay isn't Clipper Gap. First of all, Mr. Gogler's proposed business is not permitted by the Placer County zoning ordinance. While the sale and repair of firearms may be permitted if there's a minor use permit that's approved, the zoning ordinance does not allow the research, development, and manufacture of firearms or weapons, and explicitly prohibits the manufacture of ammunition. And it's my contention, and my client's contention, that that is the heart of Mr. Gogler's business. The staff report states that, that the purpose, purpose of Mr. Gogler's business is to, quote, "sell and repair firearms." However, I think that's misleading. The exemption verification that is, that was filed along with the minor use permit by Mr. Gogler in that, and signed by Mr. Gogler, in that he specifically describes that they proposed business is, quote, in one, in one sentence, "research and development of long gun loads and ammunition and other lawful business." And it was approximately just about a month ago, as of, on about July fifteenth, that was still the purpose of the business. After opposition from neighbors and from community, from the community, Mr. Gogler then submitted a letter to the county on July twenty seventh, where he downplays the manufacture of ammunition, and diverts the attention to, "I'm just doing sale and repair firearms, that, that's what I'm doing." And, and the evidence of that is there's a vague and a passive reference in his July twenty seventh letter, where he says that micro, microtechnics will, quote, "periodically prepare a small quantity of ammunition for sale or as samples." And he also discusses making bulk ammunition sales. And these activities, specifically ammunition, in the code sections to the Placer County Code are, are detailed in, in, in our letters, are explicitly prohibited by the zoning ordinance, and alarmingly, they're not addressed in the staff report at all, nor in the conditions of approval, that ammunition in particular, that that is not manufacture of it is, cannot be, cannot be done.
Thank you. That, that'll be your time limit now.
Thank you.
Now, I should say, if someone else in the audience is willing to give up their time to, to talk more.
Okay. I just need probably two more minutes.
Very well.
I appreciate it. Thank you. So, e- even if the commission determines that this business is properly zoned, I mean, complies with the zoning ordinance, which, which it doesn't, the commission has the discretionary authority to approve or disapprove the minor use permit if it poses a, a risk to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And, and it does. There's the criminal element, I mean, the commercial repair or manufacture or sell firearms and ammunition, that invites a criminal element, especially when, as the time we are in now, the ammunition and guns are scarce, they're hard to get. There's the, the fence here, and there's a reference in the staff report and in Mr. Gogler's July twenty seventh letter that the property's secure, that there's a fence that goes all the way around the property, which there is, there's a fence. But I included in the letter I submitted yesterday to the commission, a photograph of the front of, of the, of the gate, that it butts up against my client's property, and there's about a three to four foot gap where somebody can just walk through it uninhibited, if they want. Children, anybody could do that. There's fire danger, increased traffic, there's oak trees brush that are ripe fuel for fire, kids in the streets and with increased traffic with deliveries and so forth. There's environmental concerns, byproducts and materials used to manufacture firearms and ammunition. How are those disposed? How are those taken, taken care of? That's not, again, that's not addressed in the staff report or in, in the business plan. And then, and then finally, and I'll end with this, property values. Having a business that's a firearm business in a residential neighborhood will bring down property values, and specifically my client's property, who's immediately adjacent to it. If they go to sell their property, it's most likely the law would require them to disclose that, hey, my neighbor is operating a firearms business in his garage right next door. And that's inevitably going to, you know, take the desirability of their property, they'll bring that down, and consequently, the market value of the property. So, in conclusion, for all these reasons, on behalf of my clients, I would respect the request that the planning commission deny Mr. Gogler's request for a minor use permit, or in the alternative, at least at a minimum, impose restrictions that satisfy these concerns of my client. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I was just going to ask the county to respond to some of your comments, because, especially as it relates to their stating that code says that this type of business is not appropriate.
In, in the staff report, I think you'll note that we did discuss this with the agency director, and it was determined that this is a use that's consistent with the firearm repair and sales, and, and the zoning ordinance allows the director to do that, and we're asking that you make that same determination.
I just have one, one comment. I think you were a little misleading when you were talking about the ammunition sales, bulk ammunition sales, because my understanding for his business plan that was read, he's not bringing bulk ammunition onsite and selling it from that site. He's just the middleman, where from the manufacturer to a third party, if I'm not mistaken, that that's what it said, so I just wanted to...
Yeah, and, and...
...record, because you made it sound like he's bringing in truckloads of ammunition and stuff.
Well, I don't know, and, and that's part of my, part of the issue is, I don't know how much ammunition he's going to have on, onsite. I mean, there's, there's a question about how many guns, is there going to be one gun a month? I mean, that, that's unclear. It's vague in, in his business plan, and this is the first I heard today, that, that the bulk ammunition's going to be offsite. That's not clear in the business plan either. It just talks about reference to bulk ammunition sales. So, that answers your question.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Dr. Grace Lusk. I'm a child adolescent and adult psychiatrist. I lived in Hidden Valley for thirty-three years. I've practiced for over forty years. I find, I know it's a term, minor use permit, but this is not minor. We're talking designer ammunition, isn't that what it is? This is an attractive nuisance. You know, I've dealt with kids, and they get into things. I mean, we study them, but they study us. They know where the alcohol is kept, they know where grandma's medication is, they know where people sell pot, they know where the guns are, they know where the keys to the guns and the keys to the car are, and they do things, they get into things. I mean, I, I know there's criminal elements, but we have a large number of kids. This is a family community, which is sold and, and advertised as a secure family environment. When I read all of the letters, I mean, I think there's forty to three opposed to this, because we know as having families and having children, that they are curious, they get into things. The security in this community, I think, is really compromised by having this kind of permit, and it's a precedent. Zoning protects your community's identity and value, and the precedent of having a gun permit, sales ammo, is terrible. I, I just think that you're very unwise, and this would be detrimental to the community. I think it's detrimental to the security of the families that live there. I would really appreciate your thinking very seriously about approving this, because I think the consequences are going to be awful. Anyway, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
One of the thoughts that, that I'm having is that, you know, in the Granite Bay area, I would, you know, there's no way you can do an inventory, but I imagine there's several, many, many people there that are actually gun enthusiasts and have a locker full of guns in their house already. And one of the differences I'm seeing here is if somebody comes forward with a permit, a minor use permit that's granted by the county, they are, well, they're basically forced to comply with the permit that they get, whereas somebody that's just a gun enthusiast, enthusiast and has his garage full of guns, you know, there's no enforcement that goes with that. And so, there is a difference here in that, that the, the permit itself, if it gets violated, then the owner of the permit runs the risk of losing the permit. So, that's just a thought I wanted to throw out.
Yeah. So, it held to a lot higher standard than...
Is there, is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Paula Campbell. I live next door to Gary Gogler. I oppose this permit. I believe that a commercial or an industrial building is far better suited than a detached garage in a residential neighborhood for the purposes of making ammunition and working with firearms. I also have talked with Michael Fanone, the person who owns Fanone Firearms, which was approved in 2012. And Mr. Fanone's property is in Clipper Gap, it's ten acres, it's rural, it's remote, and it's next to a railroad track. And I asked Mr. Fanone if his neighbors had opposed his permit, and he said, yes, they all had. They had all written letters, and they had all attended the hearing, and it was passed. I ask you to deny this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Mary Clark, and I live around the corner.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I just have a question. You're talking about enforcing and the fact that he has come forth asking for a permit instead of just going about randomly like other people. What is the criteria for his... What is the criteria for his, this being enforced? Who's going to be watching out, checking up on the activities? Because it seems very vague to me that there is, once you have a permit, are they coming out once a month, once every six months, once every five years? And I have a 14-year-old daughter and lots of friends that go through the area, and of course, I'm concerned. And I don't see that it's a secure area. And so I just wanna voice my opposition to this. And I would like some answers as to who's going to be enforcing if this indeed does pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wanna answer that?
If you'd like. As far as enforcement, you know, the applicant is responsible for complying with all the conditions of approval. Is the planning staff gonna be out there checking up? No. But I will say that there's probably periodic inspections by the fire department to see if he's complying with, you know, the requirements about, you know, the amount of powder stored. As it relates to, you know, if there's more, you know, people coming to the property, you know, usually what'll happen typically is we'll get a, receive a complaint. Then the county will go and investigate the complaint and determine whether or not he's complying with the conditions or not. And then if he's not, we'll go through the code enforcement process. The good thing about this permit is that there is a permit that we can revoke. And that's probably not gonna be very attractive for the applicant because he's gone through a lot of effort to, you know, potentially get this. To put it in jeopardy is not gonna be in his best interest.
Thank you.
Could I ask Paul a question about his answer?
Sure.
Maybe one of the things that needs to be done is to add a list of people that come and go, that, on a timing basis. So that on October 3rd, we had, there was three people came or four people came. And probably a list of
A log.
A log of what they bought, what they took, and how long they were there. Just so that if there are issues that somehow the lady in the back of the room has to deal with, the, we have something to refer to. And I think it would help, not only help the community know what's going on, but it would help the applicant know what his, how his business is doing and who's using it. And he can use that as a response to perhaps mitigate some of the issues. I don't know. I don't think it's a condition, but it could be if it was worthwhile.
I will say certainly if the planning commission desires, we'd be happy to, you know, put together a condition that requires some type of log to be submitted on a monthly, annual basis, whatever the commission's pleasure.
It would seem like it would be in his best interest to do it anyway. So then in case he's ever challenged, he has documentation to support his position.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close discussion here and let the lady, and then I'll bring it back for discussion. Please.
Sorry.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Van Tassel-Manton. I am here speaking as an individual owner in Hidden Valley subdivision. I am clearly not here, and wish to make this extremely clear, as president of Hidden Valley Community Association, I am not speaking from that platform. As an individual, I am here to pass the sleep test. I wanna be able to sleep at night. And from what I have heard in these proceedings so far, I'm not able to sleep at night. Why? It has not been disclosed anywhere in the documentation what the status is at Hidden Valley. Do you all have the staff report commissioners? Page 10 is a diagram of the location. And there's a gigantic blank space, which is exactly two houses and away from, that's a 14-foot road, morning side. But that big blank space, that happens to be a federally regulated riparian area with seasonal wetland and permanent wetland. And it is what's referred to in planning as rooterol, meaning weed, shrub, dry grass. It is not a greenbelt. And I'm highly concerned that this board, in making a decision on what is going to be a test case of future garage owners coming for permits or not coming for permits, that you be aware of this test case being in a very unique location and under unique circumstances. That represents on that blank space 180 acres of dry grassland. We've had numerous authorities and agencies out there over the last three years, and they're all, including Chief Benton Court's personnel, everyone, and the deputy commissioner, who is supposed to get a copy of this, they've all been very concerned about the extreme fire danger. And of course, their preservation actions, we cannot mow. We're regulated because it's federally controlled. We don't know what a wet plant is. So we can't mow down our weeds. And you are less than 200 feet away. Should there be something negligent, I don't want it resting on mine not having disclosed to you so that you could make a decision, understanding the situation. If you look at, I'm not doing anything officially, but I was taken by page 33. There was a letter by a person named Ghosterson. And there's a list of several things concerning the fire hazards that exist in the Lakeview Hills region and in Hidden Valley. I would call that to your attention, and I can confirm that as being accurate and an item which I would hope you could consider and perhaps explore additional conditions, such as the monthly and annual. Thank you.
Ask a question, please?
When you met with these experts about the dry area and all that, did any of these experts suggest limiting the amount of guns and ammunition that the private individuals living right next door should be able to own or possess?
Any type of spark or fire from any source whatsoever has been the topic.
But no specific recommendations regarding the possession or ownership privately of guns and ammunition right around, surrounding?
Consultations with experts who would be able to make determinations of specifics has been discussed many times.
And they recommended to limit the private ownership?
No.
Okay, thank you.
To go to the consultants who, and the experts who could then do such. They simply were making all of us in the general area aware that we were in extreme fire risk, and our fire prevention and resources for extinguishing were not the best. But yet, we're in a position where we can really do nothing to improve the situation on our end. So we simply ask that great care be taken with those thoughts in mind. And if expert agents need to be consulted, so be it. But obviously, anything that's capable of making a spark is a problem for us, including lawn mowers.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for letting me sleep at night while you're pretty still listening. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Well, my name is Dave Campbell. I live next door to Mr. Gogler. I did have a question regarding the recent letters or emails that have been received by the council. How many have been received, and what is the level of opposition in those letters?
If you're talking about letters received by county council, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, by the commission.
I could estimate that there's 70, 75 letters. And there could have been four, five that were supporting.
So clearly, the community is against this operation and would like to see it not passed.
I guess my deal is, when I hear, you know, 50, 60, take, you know, the whole area. There are 500 people, you know, 1,000 people in the area, and you have that.
So you're gonna assume that the rest of them were in favor of it? I don't think so. I believe the ratio is probably correct.
I don't know. A lot of times in hearings that we have, a lot of people are, that maybe don't disagree, don't come to a meeting, or don't write a letter. Usually, it's the opposition on any issue that we have is gonna be the vocal ones. People that don't have an issue with it usually don't come to the meetings.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? If not?
Well, you kinda gave up your time to the lawyer.
All right, come on. You're the last person, hopefully.
Well, I'm Charlotte Turner. I'm a neighbor. And my concern is with his facility being inspected. I called the gun shops. They're inspected by the AFT, the fire department, and they're inspected by the Department of Justice. So my concern, and I wouldn't be so concerned if I knew that he was being inspected and that he wasn't, you know, storing gunpowder and whatever else. And also, the response time for the sheriff in our area is approximately 30 minutes. So if someone were to come and jump his little fence that's like this high and get in there, it takes 30 minutes. And the reason I know that is we shot a rattlesnake seven times, and it took 30 minutes for the sheriff to show up. And 10 minutes later, I had, you know, four more cars. And I had a neighbor that reported to me that there was a suspicious car leaving Mr. Gogler's driveway quite in a hurry. And 30 minutes later, the sheriff showed up. And he asked the sheriff, the sheriff jumped his little fence and went on his property. My neighbor asked, what's the problem? He says someone set off his silent alarm. So he told them that, yes, I saw a car speeding away. So my concern is with the inspections. I like to see in here that there's gonna be inspections. And my concern with the criminal activity also, if we have someone come. I mean, the fire department's up the street, but they can't really help us. So my concern, I have a 14-year-old son, and he's very excited about this business because he's gonna be on the trap Tina Del鲁. So, well, thank you for your time.
Okay. Before I close the public period, Mr. Gogler, would you care to respond to any of the comments made?
Sure. A couple of things. I'm not sure exactly the time, I'm not exactly sure the time that this visit to my site was. But we had our security system checked annually. And part of that was to test the fire alarm. So Foothill Systems came out and put their smoke up and set off the fire alarm. And maybe that's what it was. As far as the property being secured, I've never said that the property is secured. I said it's fenced. And the gate and all the appurtenances, therefore, are really just mitigation factors to try to dissuade people from coming in. What used to happen before we put the gate up is we would get people turning into our lot, thinking that we're Turner Road. And when they would come to the end of our driveway where the garage is, they would get stuck and back up and smash our garage door. This happened about 20 years ago when a county sheriff deputy came about 4:30 in the morning, and he ran off the edge of the driveway, and I had to get out and help him hydraulically lift up his car to get out. So that was one of the reasons that we put up the gate, was to deter people from coming into the property that it's private property. So any other questions?
Yeah, a couple. It was brought up about, you know, vehicles making deliveries when you're not there.
The FedEx and UPS people have gate codes. They can come in and make the deliveries go around our circular driveway and drive back out.
Okay. And then the other one in regards to inspections?
BATF, BATF would be the main driver, and they can come in at any time they want, unannounced.
So you're sort of at their mercy?
I'm following their rules.
Okay, I have a couple of questions too. On ammunition and firearms, you know, like alcohol, UPS is required to get a signature. Are they required to get a signature and any of that kind of stuff?
For alcohol, a signature is required, yes.
But not for firearms or ammunition?
Uh, no.
Okay. Let me see. There was some discussion, and when you're talking about reloading versus manufacturing, there's probably a fuzzy line between them.
Well, reloading, actually, if you go in reverse and say manufacturing, manufacturing has an overall definition of high quantity of, you know, mechanical equipment that's manufacturing ammunition in bulk, like the ammunition manufacturers would do. And there are specific sections in the county code that discusses manufacturing. And it's in a large scale deal, not like what I'm doing of 20 or 30 rounds at a time.
So are you taking, are people bringing you the shell casings, and you're loading them, or what?
No, I have the shell casings.
You're not manufacturing the shell casings?
No. Oh, I don't have the capacity to do that. No.
You're assembling ammunition?
Right. That's right.
And so I guess, I guess there's been a determination that this is not, like, we've heard reference to the county ordinance that talks about manufacturing ammunition. I guess there's been a determination that you're not doing that.
I'm not doing that.
Any other question?
Let me see. I guess the other question that comes up is the question of scale. Now, as I read this, that on your minor use permit, your activity is limited to accessory use, which I guess primary use would be the residence?
Yes. The residence is the primary use.
So I'm just interpreting that if you let your business grow into a more commercial activity, that one of your neighbors could raise a complaint about you beyond accessory?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. See, also in item five, apparently the fire department has been out and looked at your operation?
Approved it. Fire marshal, Lawrence Benton Court, yes.
Okay. And so as long as you keep operating like you told the fire marshal, then
I'm good.
Probably okay with that, but if you get out of bounds on that, then they
They will come and get me.
Yeah. Or at least it's gonna challenge your permit. They might shut you down.
Sure.
Let me see. Let me see, the UPS trucks, you're gonna have one per day?
I doubt it.
You know, if you're gonna have
I mean, for the last couple of weeks, I haven't had anything come.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll, I might, like a lot of us do, order from amazon.com, something like that, through the internet, get something delivered. But no, not that much.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like your use is much above what any of your neighbors would be.
I wouldn't think so. And a lot of times, the UPS, when they do come, they just come to my property, drop off and leave, and head back to Auburn Falls. And don't even head down into the rest of the neighborhood.
Or else they go deliver to somebody else's house?
Unless they're delivering to somebody else's house, yeah.
Okay. And then, let me see, sheriff's involvement, do they come and inspect ever, or?
They already signed off and gave me Placer County Sheriff Office permit.
Okay. And to keep that current, what do you have to do?
I have to renew it every two years, I believe.
Every two years?
Mm-hmm.
And so they'll come out and inspect your operation and?
Whatever they wanna do.
Do they normally come out and inspect, or?
I don't know. I don't have the permit yet.
Oh, you don't have the permit yet?
I don't have the permit, so I don't know.
So that's pending then?
That's pending.
Okay, so.
Before you off.
You won't be doing anything until you have them issue a permit?
Negative. In fact, that question came up at the MAC. One of the members asked, how many have I produced so far? And I said, zero, because I'm not permitted.
Okay. I think that finishes my questions. Thank you.
I have one quick question. Sorry to keep you going so long here. Storing the guns and the ammunition within the building, would you typically keep, say, his deer rifle, when he gives it to you, just in the room? Or would you keep it? you keep it in a locked locker?
It goes in a hard case, locked, kind of carrier.
So even if someone did get access to the garage, they wouldn't get in a whole lot of excitement out of that because they wouldn't have another problem to get a gun?
No. It, it wouldn't be to their advantage.
Would that be true of, say, uh, you probably wouldn't store the gunpowder in the same type of facility, would you, or would you...
Oh, I, I have right now maybe three or four pounds of powder. That's it.
Okay. But essentially, it'd be pretty tough to, for youngsters to, is, was concerned getting in there and even if they got in somehow...
They're not going to get much.
And that, it's not going to do them much good, is it? Okay, thank you.
Did you say it's a gun safe or...
No, it's a lock carrier. They're ra, uh, rifle cases that are hard, hard shell, made out of usually injected, uh, polyethylene and then, or pad, padlock.
So they could pick it up and carry it out?
Oh, they could. They could.
I, just following up on that, are you, are you planning to get, like, one of the gun safes, you know, just to put the fire...
No, I wasn't planning on it. With just one, uh, rifle typically at a time, that's, it, it didn't seem like it was, uh, appropriate.
Do you have security in the garage?
Pardon?
Do you have any security in the garage?
Yes, it's a, it's part of the whole, um, security system, yes.
It's got motion and it's got, you know, if a door is open...
Oh, if, if the doors or windows are, are breached, alarm goes off.
Yeah. You know, follow...
And it's central, and it is also centrally monitored.
Yeah. You know, just following up on that though, would you be adverse to getting a gun safe? I mean, they're, they're reasonable and I mean, it gives you where you can put a hard case in there, it just gives you...
No, I wouldn't be adverse to it.
So if, you know, we propose that, that that would be part, you know, something that you, you would have to do, you wouldn't be opposed to it?
No. No.
Any other questions? I have one, um, concerning the deliveries, for example, if I was to mail in, um, my high-powered rifle with, uh, several rounds that I wanted to have reloaded or something like this, and you weren't there and the UPS man came in and was able to access your, through your gate, and he wouldn't leave that on your front porch?
No, he wouldn't leave that on the front porch.
Where, where...
Actually, it can't...
What would be the procedure?
Uh, it actually can't go by UPS.
Okay.
There's, they have to go FedEx.
Okay, same.
Yeah.
So answer that question if you would. What happens when the FedEx guy...
They, they take it back. They would take it...
So if you're not there, there's no deliveries made of any guns or firearms?
Right.
You have to either sign for it or at least take physical possession personally?
That's right, I have to take it.
Okay, so they won't leave it?
Yeah, well, or I, my wife can sign for it, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I threw out the log thing earlier and you kind of noted that it didn't seem like too bad a suggestion either, does that...
Oh, the log?
Yeah, the log I did.
Wow, no problem with that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing and bring the matter back to the board for discussion.
Say, I have a question for, uh, probably county council, because, uh, you know, and I think we got this answered by the, uh, project proposer, but on this question of manufacturing and how the county handles manufacturing of, uh, you know, ammunition versus what we've proposed here, I'm assuming there's been some kind of determination on that, but I think, would like to have clarification from somebody in the staff or the county that, that what we heard is not right or, right or whatever.
Right. Um, however, I'm going to punt to the planning department because that would be a determination made by planning.
Okay.
So as far as the, uh, yes, the, the planning director determined that, you know, the, the ammunition reloading was consistent with, uh, sales and, and repair of firearms, um, in the ordinance. Uh, there was not any, any limit as to what could be reloaded. Uh, certainly if the commission thought that, uh, uh, there should be some type of limit on the amount of reloading that occurs, that could be a, a condition of approval placed on this permit.
I'm, I'm just like, say, one, I did meet with the applicant and go over and take a look at his property and, and his, his facility and that. I can name a dozen people whose collections and loading setup and that make his look tiny. In fact, his loading operation is tiny. If that single-stage press of his could put out a hundred rounds in an hour, I'd be surprised. Um, it, it's not, it's all by hand, it's all onesie twosies at a time, it's not a production setup. And, um, like I say, there's countless number of gun collection ammunition stores and powder stores that are huge in comparison to what the applicant has going on and they're under no restriction. He has put himself now under the microscope of Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Firearms, the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department, all can come in and inspect his operation and, and the rest of us aren't subject to that. We all can get UPS deliveries at any limitation, whether we have gates or not, yeah, sometimes it's a traffic issue, but none of us have those kind of limitations. To do this business legally, he has agreed to give up a lot of privileges that the rest of us enjoy daily and put himself under a microscope. He's not firing a gun on the property, so, uh, you know, with my knowledge of guns, I've never seen a bullet make a spark or a gun make a spark until somebody pulls the trigger. And if that's not happening on the property, then it's not an issue. As far as the attractive nuisance, uh, one, I will tell you, getting my appointment to go meet with Mr. Gogler was a difficult thing to do. He wanted to know who I was and what I wanted for sure, and I know he made some calls to verify it before he let me in. Um, it's not an easy thing to get in there. And yes, kids will be kids and go where they want, but with no signage, no notice, they're just as likely to wander in anybody's garage and look around and I don't think they find anything in his too fascinating.
And Jeffrey, just, uh, to follow up on the, you seem to know a lot about this, a lot more than me, but if, if business is good and, uh, it seems like maybe we can do a, a lot more reloading, you know, you were, you were going to think about, well, should, but would, uh, how would you distinguish when we're getting out of the zone of just reloading and into the manufacturing, if you were to describe that?
Well, for one, he's, he's, he's assembling ammunition, he's buying individual components and putting them together as opposed to truly manufacturing anything. It's an assembly thing. Um, so I don't know that, that there truly should be a limit. What his niche in the market that I understand is very precision, very custom reloads that are painstakingly done to bring out the maximum accuracy of arrival. Um, you can't mass produce and maintain that kind of quality control, which is why competition shooters want to hand load their ammunition instead of buying it off the shelf. Um, to maintain his control and his quality, he's not going to be able to up the quantity significantly. Um, unless, of course, he changes his whole, whole purpose, but the niche he's fitting into is very specific in the market.
Okay, so at least what I heard there is maybe the difference is here assembling from various manufacturers versus actually manufacturing?
Yeah.
And so if that's the case, then maybe in my, maybe you understand it better now, so, so I'm okay, I guess, with where we're at on that. Unless somebody else wants to raise that question.
I, I guess one, one thing that I brought up though was the having, uh, gun safe, gun vault, you know, just for security purposes and I, I just take it very personally and, you know, and I, I think it would...
If someone did break in, why at least it would be another option?
Yeah, they'd, they'd have to get in and said it's not a big expense, but it would... What I'm struggling with is, uh, while obviously he has the right, and again, I appreciate that he is asking for this permit, there is, seems to be such overwhelming opposition from the immediate neighbors that, uh, we can't sort of obviously dismiss that, I'm not suggesting that we are, um, because even though, again, he has the right, uh, is it, is it the best thing for the community is what I'm trying to wrestle with.
Um, you know, it's very easy, especially with a topic like guns, to turn it into an emotional issue. And I see a lot of that in some of the responses. Again, I understand legitimate concerns, but I see a lot of very emotional, very, um, guns bad kind of tone in a lot of it. And, you know, I don't know that, that you will ever conquer emotion with logic. Um, it seems to me that the applicant has addressed the fire issue, the, the security issue, the delivery issue, he's, you know, restricted himself heavily on those compared to what the rest of us can do on a day in a day out basis. And, um, you know, like I say, I don't, I don't see the problem with it.
Yeah, I, I guess his, his operation is a lot different than if he was selling guns out of his house where he had, you know, a hundred weapons. There are, there's probably a, a lot of people right in his immediate neighborhood that probably have more guns on site than what he would have at any time doing a business and if there's ones that are reloading, probably loading a lot more ammunition than, than he is if they're just like to shoot, random shoot.
We heard reference of the, the trap clubs at the high schools. Those kids shoot two hundred rounds a day for practice and most of them have somebody around that loads ammunition for them and they stockpile a lot of powder and a lot of primers to keep up with the demand of the kids shooting. Um, you know, so there's, there's places around with lots and lots and lots of powder and nobody knows and nobody's checking.
Yeah, you're not saying anything.
And, and nobody's putting conditions on them. Um, and, and so I think we need to be real careful in over restricting him just because he's honest enough and stand up enough to come in and ask for permission, what a lot of people do without it anyway.
Well, I always have the, the view of, if it's a right in the zoning and he's looking for the conditional use permit and it's coming before us and we can add on conditions that the person right next door could, could go out and buy twenty weapons, reload a thousand rounds a day and, and stuff and there's no restrictions on them and stuff. I have a, a problem saying, well, you do have certain rights and let's start, you know, denying those rights because then what happens when the neighbor comes in and wants to do something with their property that there's a stated right and then the neighbors say, well, we don't like it, it's not what you're doing that bothers us, but you're bringing a lot of people onto the grounds, whether it's somebody doing taxes out of their house and they have instead of three people at a time restricted fifteen a day where they're having during tax seasons, maybe thirty, forty people coming five, six days a week. And so I'm in the mind, sometimes you have to be careful what you wish for because you, pretty soon, when you come in for something, then you're not going to get it either, get it taken away. And so I've always had a, had a problem of, I don't have a problem with conditions, but just saying no to, to something that is a, a right to a person.
Let me see, just to kind of move things along a little bit, uh, you know, before we, uh, move away from the gun safe, you know, I would be supportive of, uh, testing the commission to see if that is something that, uh, the commission would support as an additional condition.
Are you ready for a motion?
Well, we can ring it back to discussion anyway, so a motion will have to be here at some time.
I make the motion. The conditions is, uh, approved. I think that and the law both could be made in one motion.
Yeah.
Since I, I'd make the motion that we approve the, uh, minor use permit, subject to the attached sequel findings and, and conditions and that we add the condition that the applicant, uh, acquire a suitable gun safe, um, so that he can secure any firearms that aren't his own personal weapons and, uh, and let him get on with business. Um, you know, I don't, I don't, it's, it's an enforcement thing, who's to say, and it, it creates contention. Who gets to review the log? How, do you have to keep it? Is he going to lose his permit because somebody doesn't like how good the law? I mean, it's just, it's an area of contention. If there's too much traffic, the county, the county's going to hear about it and it's going to be up again anyway.
I think just internally it...
Did, was there, was there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Can I ask staff a question? I had to brought this up first. Um, that, what, what are the conditions where you, minor use permit can be revoked?
Uh, fail, failure to comply with the conditions of approval. Any one of the conditions, if they fail to comply with it or operate within the, the conditions, we can, uh, go through the process to potentially modify or revoke the use permit.
Okay, and if it's, uh, for example, this business about how many loads and stuff and, you know, most of his sales are going to be through the internet and not on, from the property, but if it gets to a point where you, who would make that determination that there's, it looks like a lot of ammunition's coming out of this property, not just a few high, high-powered loads, there's precision loads, who would make that determination? Because that would be in contrast to what we've been presented as far as what he's planning on doing over there.
You know, there's not really anything in the conditions of approval right now that say, you know, how much ammunition they can...
I know, that's why I'm asking, no.
Reload, but there, there is, there is the, the requirement on the, the amount of powder he can store and that's twenty pounds. So if he exceeds that requirement, then that's one of the conditions that we can say, whoa, wait a minute, he's exceeding the twenty pounds of, that he can store on the property, so that's in there. Um, the other thing that's, uh, he has provided us with is his business plan that says, here's what I'm proposing to do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, he's got the number one requirement, that it has to be accessory to his residential use. And so if all of a sudden he has more people visiting the shop than what the conditions state, then, uh, there would be a question whether it's accessory anymore.
Sure, sure. If he's exceeding the number of patrons that you can have at any one time or the number of patrons during the day or anything else is associated with the home occupation life, um, approval, um, we'll look at that as well.
Okay, any other questions? I have just one and perhaps they've been asked and answered. When you have twenty pounds of powder on the premises and you use up ten of it and send it away, how's the next ten come to you? Or next twenty or whatever?
Ask that again, please.
The powder that you use for the loads?
Yes.
How do you acquire it? How is it delivered to you?
Oh, by UPS.
Okay, so they just deliver it to you directly?
Yes. Or I can go down to any of the number of, uh, gun stores that have it and then just buy it off the shelf.
Okay, thank you, that's... Okay, any other discussion? We've got a motion. Uh, I'm going to call for a vote and I'll call for a roll call, vote.
Mr. Nader?
No.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes.
Mr. Denio?
Yes.
Mr. Sevisman?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Motion, please. Good luck. Talk about the appeal. Yep. Oh, indeed. There are, especially, uh, ten days to appeal this decision and the fee would be five hundred and thirty-six dollars and I think the forms are available at the county council count. Where's, where are the forms for the appeal?
Appeals, uh, appeal forms are available at the front counter, uh, just outside, sort this, outside this door and to the right and you can go right up to the front counter and they can provide those for you.
With that, I conclude the meeting for today and thank you very much for all your attendance.